This time I'd like to call July 8th, Macon County Board of Commission meeting to order. It's been a hot, dry summer, and I want to thank each and every one of you in attendance tonight, and a special thank you to the Board of Health. Tonight, a special joint meeting, I think it's the first I've heard of in several decades, so I want to send a sincere thank you for being here tonight. Any announcements, Ms. Kayman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kay?
I'd have a couple. There were a couple of employees from Transit that participated in the North Carolina Public Transportation Association Vehicle Radio back in the spring. Joe Talent, CEO of Enzo, Elaine Swimmer, Tom Sock, they actually placed four in the state. So I thought it was a big accomplishment for those two. And then one other announcement, we have a new application process. We were using the NC Works PD 107 application, North Carolina application. Our application for employment is now online, it'll make it a lot easier for folks to apply. It's an easier process to fill out, so that's on our webpage, so if anybody sees that and has any questions, what is going on with that?
Commissioner Breeden? Mr. Fong? Mr. Shields?
This Friday, July 11th, 7:30 a.m., and the program at the Chamber of Commerce caused Eggs and Issues. I was looking for somebody from the Sheriff's Department, but they have the program this Friday at the Chamber of Commerce. I don't see no law enforcement. Also, that evening on July 11th, from 1:00 to 3:00, Angel Medical Center is having a open house. You're welcome to come, from 1:00 to 3:00. Come to the Angel, New Angel Medical Center, and they're going to do a walkthrough. And there are some interesting things that they'll point out to you, so I hope you can come.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, let's take me just a minute for this, but I'd like to thank the town of Franklin, Franklin Police Department, Franklin Fire Department, Chamber of Commerce, Macon County Rec Park, Macon County Fairgrounds, Macon County Sheriff's Department, Macon County EMS, Macon County Transit, Macon County Fire Marshal's Office, Serve Pro, all the vendors, the food trucks, churches, radio stations, local bands, and to the many, many employees, and volunteers, and any other folks that I failed to mention, for a great Fourth of July celebration at the park this year. I think they said it's been five years since that event has been held at the rec park. And I'd like to especially thank the committee that worked for weeks organizing this event and making it possible. It was great to see, if you weren't there, it was great to see all the families. And a lot of people went out there and they spent the entire day, they were there that morning, they set up tents, they had barbecue grills, they had coolers, their families, their kids were down there playing soccer, football, baseball, life back in the park. And I'm just so grateful to see all the families. So for everybody that had a hand in that ceremony and event, it was a great day, so thank you.
Mr. Lawrence? Ms. Laurie? Mr. Counselor?
I don't hear anything.
All right, well, there's just something special about Commissioner Shields leading us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Would you?
If you'd like to stand, please stand for a moment of silence, or remain standing for a pledge of allegiance. Again, while you're in this moment of silence, don't forget about the people in Texas, what they're going through. We're familiar with a lot of this, but it is really shocking to watch it on TV. You definitely have a heartfelt piece for what's going on there, so think of those people. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right. We do not have any public hearings tonight. Any additions to the agenda? Anyone?
Chairman Young, I have an addition on the Airport Authority appointment for this evening. There's an additional name, the application came in this afternoon, it's at your desk in front of you. That is a current board member on the Airport Authority, Janet Shooter. She did not get sufficient notification to submit her application, so she submitted this afternoon. As per consideration, she is on the ballot, and Mr. Shields and Laurie, I believe, were at the Airport Authority meeting when they made the recommendation to reappoint her.
That date was on June 4th, and their recommendation at that time was to reappoint Janet Shooter and Pete Heathcock back to the Airport Authority Board.
All right. Any other additions to the agenda? All right. This time we'll open the public comment period. And we'll start off with Ms. Susan Carpenter.
The community of Nattehalin, we are proposing to put in a larger monument for veterans. And I want to make sure that you are all on the same page as we are. I want a yes, or a yes, right hand, to continue on with the project. The current layout we have in the picture there is just a small stone, doesn't say anything in particular. And then the proposed layout, two stones, the old stone on one side, the new stone will be five foot, three foot high, I think eight inches deep, it'll look like a monument, and also would be on a base rock of one foot high, very type of monument. So it'll be right in between the two flagpoles, the flagpoles are 12 foot apart, and maybe one layer of pavers right in the front. And the mock-up that I have is for our Nattehalin veterans, to those who have given much for our freedom, and to those who have given their all. And we list the, there's about six or eight of them. We had also the Civil War veterans, but I'm not getting any response from the community to add some, that their ancestors were killed in the Civil War. So we only had two that were buried in the cemeteries, so we eliminated them. But if they come through, then we'll put them back in onto the stone. The statement, "And to those that have given their all," comes from one of the books on Nattehalin Yesteryear, I believe it's called, by Dois Waters. And he describes veterans who was killed in the war, and just, why have a cliche? So we just put that thing in, that statement, very, very plain and simple. So we're going to go ahead with this, guys?
What is the cost?
Yeah. The old quote that I have, using that with the placement by Bob Barton from Western Carolina, he's over in Waddle, the pavers would be about $7,100.
That's installed. That is installed?
Yeah. Well, we're going to install it. Bob Barton would do the installation. One fellow says he's going to go drive down and pick it up, so we don't have any shipping costs whatsoever. And we'll just have labor. In preparing the site, taking the small river gravel out, and I'm proposing that we use maybe the slate that we can get over in Wesa, the Nattehalin slate, which is nice, very, very dark, so it's all around the flagpoles. Any questions?
What's that mean?
And everything is done by the community.
I mean, that's the timer.
Yeah, we're in the public comment.
We'll have Mr. Kay be in touch with you. At this point in time, I don't feel like we can make any commitments, we'll be in discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I will, we had talked earlier, so if you want me to research options, we'll try to come back at the next meeting.
Well, I can do the bigger presentation.
Yeah, okay.
We already got a donation from the VFW, and the American Legion is meeting tonight, and they are going to vote on it, or discuss it, they said. And I think next meeting that they have is, I'll give a presentation over there.
You had a donation bucket, will you, tonight? You may have done well. Look at this room right here.
Run over there.
All right, thanks for coming.
We had a mix-up in what was going to be presented for tonight, but next time I can do that with the.
All right. Thanks for coming.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Matt Jackson.
Hey, everybody. You all know that when I come up here, I do not become prepared, but I wanted to come in and talk about, you guys are having discussions on Dry County, correct? Because we are the last Dry County in North Carolina, I believe. And, I mean, obviously there's tax benefits to having stretches like Georgia Road opening up to more business. I think we would see more business coming in from people who might stop at Clayton and Raven, who aren't coming all the way in. We see Clayton and Raven growing exponentially. For some reason, we're not seeing as big of growth that they are having. I'm a licensed real estate agent, been here for 10 years, and I live down Georgia Road myself, and I've seen a number of businesses go belly up, come back, belly up. It's a recycling pattern. And over the years, I've had a number of clients that are investor clients. The only place I can ever sell them anything is, for businesses, is downtown. Or not downtown, but town, city limits. If I can't sell them here, they go to Clayton. And so I think we are missing a lot of opportunity of what could be beneficial by opening up the county. I don't know what everybody's thoughts are, I'm sure there's different opinions on it, but I think that as far as the tax revenue for growth, I think it is probably the wise option. That's my opinion, but that's why I wanted to bring it to you. That's it.
Thank you, Matt. Matt Jackson. Laura Hackett.
And the microphone should be turned on.
Let's see. Good afternoon.
Hey, everyone.
Yeah, that's better.
Can you hear me? I'm Laura Hackett. We're out of scaling. We own Iron Mountain Resort. First of all, I'd like to thank Commissioner Breeden for bringing this to everybody's attention and getting on the ballot. I called him about something else originally, which was Happy Hill Road, and then Josh, I guess, also signed off on it. We spent the last year building tennis courts, not really knowing exactly what the specifications should be on them, there's nothing really clear, calling the county, saying, is this okay? What kind of fence do we need? Do we need bathrooms? 14,400 square feet of land is what it takes to build tennis court. Nobody's ever going to really use it, but that's what we have to do to get our license to operate. We have people coming to our resort, they can't get a glass of wine, so it really affects us. And then I'm here with my husband, and a couple of the restaurant owners in our area, Maglioca's, the Mexican Restaurant, their business is so impacted. I mean, our tennis courts are all miss done, so it's not really going to do much for us, but it's really sad to see them struggling when you go to a Mexican restaurant and you can't even order a margarita. And then there's the tax base here. I mean, you guys struggle to balance the budget, and you could always use more taxes, tax dollars to go towards worthwhile projects. And I think you're really missing out because you've got the whole Georgia Road there that you can't put an applebee's or whatever, so they're not going to go there, they're not going to build a tennis court. So I encourage you to put this on the ballot for the next election season, and hopefully it'll pass. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura. Pardon if I messed this up, is it Stacy Rivers? Is that right?
It is. Good evening. My name is Stacy Rivers, and I am a manager and one of the owners of Maglioca's Restaurante in Scaly Mountain. And just as Laura was reporting there, we're just having a struggle with, you know, the antiquated law of not having the ability to offer our guests a glass of wine with dinner because that's what they want. And I mean, we're an upscale Italian restaurant, and they don't even understand why they can't. So I can't tell you how many times I'm asked for a wine list, or having to give the story as to why they can't have it, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to us or them. But in, you know, what it does as far as our revenue, we're successful to the point that we can be successful, but we're a 32-seat restaurant, you know, and that would just help us immensely to be able to give our customers what they want. And, you know, there is no progress here without change, and it's just something that we need to have so we can be successful, because we're already looking at it as what we can cut, what we can do, you know, to get any further, and this would change our lives. It really would. It would really put us in a place that, you know, would make all that hard work worth it. So I'll have to sit down.
Thank you, Stacy. Mickey Sanders.
I think my voice will carry pretty good. I'm Vicki Sanders, and I'm representing really the Upper Burnington area in regards to the Burnington Iola Fire Department. I have been donating for them for a number of years. Our area has burnt down, my barn burnt down, and I know for one thing, the insurance is reduced by being within that five-mile district, five-mile area. If we change to the Cowee area, we will be out of the district, and our insurance will not be able to be included in that reduction. And I, like I said, many years, several years ago, I had burned down probably $200,000, $300,000 worth of our area. And if it wasn't for the Burnington Iola Fire Department, and the Franklin, and the Cowee, our house would have probably burned down. And we have close to about 60 acres up there, and that is very significant if it has to be moved. So my recommendation would be to not keep Burnington Iola Fire Department as is, and not join the Cowee Fire Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sanders. All right. That concludes public comment. Looking for adjustments and/or approval of the agenda. Well, you're in motion. Your motion, Commissioner Breeden. Second, my Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and say aye. All right. No reports or presentation. Brings us to item 10A, Old Business Discussion, Macon County Board of Health, Mr. Jerry Hermanson. This time, would it be appropriate for you to call your meeting to order?
Absolutely. I don't need to step up for that, do I? You can hear me right? Okay.
They may not hear you.
I'm sorry?
If they go behind you, they may not hear you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you speak down, they'll go back there.
Is that any better?
That's perfect.
Okay, thank you. After determining we have a quorum, I'd like to call a special meeting of the Board of Health to order, and if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like each of our members that are present to identify themselves and tell you what area they bring to the table. As you probably know, there are, I think, seven or eight skill sets that need to be represented on the board, like dentists, doctors, things like that. And I'd like you to know which ones they represent. I, by the way, represent the general public in one of three positions. If that's okay with you.
Please, we appreciate that.
I'd ask them to go ahead and introduce yourself to the room.
Is it here?
Stand up.
Okay. My name is Courtney Patrick. I am a clinical pharmacist by training. I have practiced for over 15 years, and have specialized in infectious disease and cardiovascular and metabolism therapeutic areas.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carlos Forges. I'm a family physician, trained in hospice and palliative medicine, and have been practicing long-term, post-keep care for the past 13 years, full-time, pediatrician, and assisted snitchers, or a lung cancer specialist.
I'm Garrett Higdon. I'm the engineer on the board. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina, and I kind of handle the environmental health side of some soil and water and that kind of stuff.
Good afternoon. I'm Angie Stone. I am a registered nurse, so I represent nursing on the health board, and I've been a nurse for 13 years, currently working for the Department of Veterans Affairs.
Good evening. My name is Matt Corbin. I'm a dentist here in Franklin, and obviously represent dentistry on the Board of Health. Practiced my first five years in the Air Force, and been back here in Franklin for the last five years, so I practice 10.
My name is Don Feivelman. 54 years in medicine. Started out as family practice, then have boards there, adult psychiatry, and child psychiatry, fellowship in pediatric, and pediatric sleep medicine. In the last 37 years, most of my practice has been pediatric in Macon, Georgia. Presently, now moving to Highlands, North Carolina. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Steve Gristle, and I am just an at-large member, so I have no specialty like these gentlemen and women do.
That's pretty incredible.
Let me just say, these are all volunteers that serve on the board. They do a great job, they take it very seriously, and we thank you all for letting us come and have this joint meeting.
All right, well, I'll just kick us right off. I feel like some of the issues that I'm going to bring up tonight are no fault to your board, I want to make sure that's clearly spoken. I feel like by design, maybe there are some flaws in the system, and I think we're here asking for help. I think what's happening right now is, we're receiving a lot of complaints, a lot of the feedback. I took 19 tally marks from my email of complaints that I've received in the past, I mean, this year, this fiscal year. And I feel like we're kind of reaching out, saying help, you know, we want to reach out to your board, we feel like your board maybe isn't getting, you know, you don't have a channel to the general public, and I feel like there has been, you know, kind of some issues going on in the past couple of years with some environmental backups and some other things that really kind of, you know, hurt us here. I think tonight's really an opportunity to meet face-to-face, I think this is a time to just kind of let the cat out of the bag, per se, and really have some just good, healthy discussion on what we can do to help each other. And I feel like we've had a lot of feedback with some kind of interdepartmental conflicts. It's really not our business to kind of get in your business, but I feel like it's a little bit overwhelming. And so with all due respect, I think that's kind of why we're here. I think there's some other board members that may have some comments they'd like to bring up, but I think generally speaking, we're just trying to help make Macon County a little better. All right? Does anybody have anything? Mr. Chairman, Mr. Breeden? You want me to go?
Yeah. Well, I am one of the liaisons to the Macon County Health Board, and I feel really out of place when I get in there with all these professionals, when I run a shovel for a living and dig ditches. But the concern that I have, and I'll just, I prepared this, as an elected body of the people, by the people, and for the people, in my opinion, it is wrong to have an appointed board by this elected board to be in complete control of Macon County Health Department. The appointed Board of Health should be an advisory board to this elected body. The Board of Health was not elected by the people, and should not have sole authority over this agency. The Board of Commissioners and the county manager should be in control of overseeing this agency. A few years ago, I witnessed an employee of the Health Department tell one of the elected commissioners that he wasn't going to tell the employee what to do, when to do it, and how to do it. I don't ever remember as being an employee or a business owner of ever hearing an employee tell their boss that they weren't going to do what they were asked to do. Well, here's the real issue. Turns out, the elected official was not their boss, nor the county manager. Their boss was the director of the Health Department and the Board of Health. We were elected by the people of this county to run this county, and I don't feel that you can operate this county if this elected body don't have control over what is happening in each agency of this county. And so, once I realized what was actually happening, yes, my phone has rang off the hook with problems, internal problems, people out here in the community, very upset, and some of this stuff, you can believe or not believe. You can, you can, you have to pick and choose where you're going with this, but when four, five, six people tell you the same thing, then you have issues. And it's not just people out here in the community that's dissatisfied with what's happening, but it's also internal with employees of the Macon County Health Department. And I fear that some of these folks, we may lose some good quality people if we don't step up to the plate and address this. And so when Commissioner Breeden had made the announcement, he thought that, you know, that this board should be the one in control of, and use the Health Board as an advisory board. It got me thinking back, all this time since I've served on this Board of Commission, as to what's actually transpired in my time. And I feel that we are, we have no authority and no control over what's happening over there. So that's, I mean, I think this somehow, I don't know all the legalities or anything like that, and it's nothing against the appointed board or anything like that, but my humble opinion is, we were elected by the people to represent the people at all costs. That's all I've got to say.
Anybody like to reply to that? Jerry? Anybody like to reply to that, Jerry?
Yes. I'm a little concerned that you've been receiving a lot of complaints.
Please be best of mind.
You haven't been fed to us. I'm a little concerned that you all, potentially most of you, have received complaints about the operation of the health board, yet nobody has come to us with those concerns. I've had one person contact me that had a problem, and they were referred by Warren's office, and we appreciate that. That's it. And like I said, we're all dedicated to make sure things run well. If we don't know there's problems and we're not communicated with, we can't do our job to make sure things run well. We have a confusing situation in my mind because we come under various regulatory limits. General Statute 130A is the state public health law, and that dictates that we have a health board, what we are supposed to do, and what we're not supposed to do, and that's part of what we have to listen to. We don't ignore the county commission in any way. If you all came to us, and we have two, two representative liaison members now, which is great, they can hopefully pass on information, and we can pass on information to them. So we would like to know when there are problems going on. I mean, I hear about them personally when there's a problem internally, and I speak with our director, which I do on occasion, frequent occasion, to know what's going on. But if you're getting information about concerns, we'd like to know.
Mr. Hermanson, let's go back, let's turn the clocks back a little bit of time. It wasn't too long ago that there was a serious backlog for permitting.
Yeah.
It took this body to take this and get it under control. It took the people out here in the community to complain to this body to get it fixed. So, so you're, I mean, we talked about it. We talked about it several times, but nothing ever changed until this body here, the elected body, made sure that something happened.
Commissioner Sherman, I attended my first county commission meeting a little over 20 years ago, and on the agenda that night was the problem being accepted and well permitted. And every time I attended this, this commission meeting, there was somebody talking about the problem for at least 20 years. It's, it's been an ongoing problem because of how it has to be done, because we can't always get the people we need to do it. And we appreciate you getting involved and helping get it to where it is now, but it's still not where it needs to be. And we're aware of that, and that's a priority for us.
I mean, when it takes, when it takes five, six, seven weeks to get a permit for something, that's very frustrating. I'm in, I'm in this business, and, and yes, I have gone for permits and, and waited and waited and waited. And it's not right, and whatever, and we had this talk.
Yep.
Whatever we need to do to bring in additional help, that's what we need to do. This county is solely dependent upon construction, home construction, second and third homeowners and everything else. That's what's the driving force here. And if we can't get this right, there's, there's a problem.
What's the wait time right now?
We have two, we have less than two week wait time right now.
Well, that's, that's a vast improvement over what was.
Oh, absolutely.
The last time we got involved in discussing this issue, but it's still not where it needs to be. And we can talk about the individual reasons for that, but they still just sound like excuses because the reality is, we don't want to make excuses. We want to solve the problem. And we know how to do it, we just haven't been able to do it because of, well, we're all going to know all the issues.
Well, it wasn't until recently that I realized that we had no authority over the, the Health Department. It was not too long ago, so I could only imagine the general public probably still don't understand that this forward.
And we do what you do at the beginning of our meetings. We have open sessions for public comment, and we hear from groups from time to time who are very adamant and concerned about issues, and we listen to them. And different than the way you do it, just for your information, is if they ask us a question, we answer it. We try to engage them during their public comment because we don't want them to go away saying, "Well, I talked and they didn't listen." We want to make sure they know that. But that's another way that we should, you know, we should hear about issues or concerns. And to the extent that you all can, can help those people that are concerned to know that if they don't already, we'd like them to know.
So we always compare everything to the surrounding counties. Where's Jackson County at now with, with their permits? Where is Clay County?
I mean, I haven't called them recently, but they're not, they're probably really close to us, if not a lot less. I mean, they wouldn't be any more than.
Because I can tell you right now, Cassiers, Glenville, all of that over there is absolutely booming. I can't, I mean, it seems to me like there's a lot more construction in Jackson County than there is in Macon County.
We're not a problem.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I think that when we're talking about environmental health, I mean, that's obviously that's been somewhat of an issue, but we have to address the other ones as well. Animal service has been an issue. One of the things that's been brought to my attention is the morale within the department. It's across the board, it's very low. And I just think that when I called this meeting, it is a little frustrating, and I think it's a little confusing, and I think it's just not a good structure. I don't think it's anything to do with the Board of Health, the Board of Commissioners. I don't think there's anyone to blame, but I don't think that's what we're trying to do here, like blame on you or your board or anything like that. But I do think that the structure of it is difficult because we are the, the funding arm of the Health Department. But we have no authority to make changes or to request something we can request all we want to, but those things don't happen directly to the Health Department. So we're kind of going through you, to them, them to you, to us. So when I initially, we started talking about this, it was more of, you know, us, I would say, taking, you know, becoming the Board of Health, but with that, you know, that would obviously be, we're not Board of Health people. That's not what we do by trade or anything like that. So we would need, you know, the Board of Health to continue doing what they're doing in an advisory committee type role. That's, I think that's what the general statute says, it would be an advisory committee, which is exactly what you've been doing the whole time. Because you didn't know about the issues. And you didn't know about the issues because the policy for the Health Department is made to where you don't know about the issues. I was kind of looking through some of that today. If you read through the Board of Health, I guess, manual book, wherever they gave me, when I became the liaison last week.
Did you read the whole thing, by the way?
I didn't read the whole thing, but I read a little bit.
It's not that big.
It's, it's not. I read the first 10 pages.
Not that big. But we had to.
But yeah. You know, it says that in the policy, you know, it's basically, you know, that goes to the Health Director, whoever that is. Those complaints go to the Health Director, and it's similar to what we're doing with county manager, you know? We deal with county manager, people complain to him, you know, however that works. But I just think it's really difficult for us to sit up here and take all the complaints and, you know, try to be the problem solvers for everyone in the community because that's what they expect out of us. But we have no authority on what's happening, and what actually happens inside the Health Department, other than payroll and, you know, the funding department. So I just feel like that's something that we, or I think that we need to change.
Well, we look forward to you coming to our meetings, by the way, being our second liaison. We never had two, I know, but two's, two's good. But, but seriously, I mean, we're there to make things run well to the extent that we as a Board of Health can do. So again, I implore you, when you hear problems, let us know. Or if you don't want to call one of us directly, let Warren know, and he'll be glad to let us know the concerns that are going on, and we can work together and resolve. We don't want there to be problems.
I mean, is this something that your board, is this something that you guys want? I mean, we do this every day. Is this what you want to do as personnel issues? I mean, these are professionals. Everybody has.
Ultimately, ultimately, we've been involved with those to the extent that we have authority. But we have, we have a Health Director who is on top of those things. We evaluate that position every year.
I would challenge that because that's why we're getting complaints. I mean, if someone was on top of those things, we wouldn't be here enough. So there's, there's an issue somewhere.
Well, don't, don't hide them from us, the board, I mean. Don't hide them from us.
We'd get into those right now.
Let me recap kind of what he's saying right here. We've had some internal dialogue, and to kind of recalibrate, we've got a pharmacist, doctor, engineer, R M., dentist, another doctor, pediatrician, and three professionals. And I feel like the side of your building says Macon County Public Health, okay? Macon County has 22, 23 departments for them, they're biased. And I feel like this board is not healthcare professionals, nor do we claim to be, nor do we know anything about it, all right? That's why we need you. That's why you're here. I feel like what Barry's saying is, we have an H R department. We help handle a lot of the issues that are currently going on right now at the Board of Health, right? We have, you have a department head. We have 22 department heads, 23, but we also have a C E O of Macon County. You know, my role on this board isn't to worry about day-to-day problems, personnel issues, and why the toilet's vacuuming up. That's not our job. That's his job. And I feel like that's Kathy's job, right? But this guy kind of talks to all the department heads. And I think we're just offering, right? If, if it would be easier, if it would help, look, we can help with some of the personnel stuff, we can help with some of the day-to-day stuff. We don't touch any of the healthcare items, any of the, you know, the veterinarian stuff. You know, we don't touch that issue. But I feel like we're extending an arm here and kind of saying, listen, we don't want our, our board to catch your complaints. We want your board to catch your complaints. And that way, it's handled in-house.
That's right.
And I think that's the problem we have right now, is how does the public get a hold of your board?
Well, they can go online to the county site, and they, I believe they're all listed in there with our phone numbers.
I have a double check of phone numbers.
We obviously have public meetings.
I think according to our policy, then I don't think that our names are listed anywhere necessarily.
Well, mine sure is. I got calls from people.
So look, don't take this, don't, don't take this as us sitting here putting you on the, I feel like, again, this is a joint meeting. And I think what I'm asking for right now is some input, you know? Talk to us, help kind of, you know, let's iron out the wrinkles. And I think we're extending a hand here. Listen, you want us to handle some of the personnel issues? You know, we have duplication. You know, you have an H R department.
Believe it or not, we come under different H R rules than the rest of the county. We have state rules that we have to follow. And, and all these things make it more difficult to manage, and I don't mean the board, the management level people. Makes it more difficult for them because they've got more than one boss, and more than one set of rules. That was one of the hardest things I had to learn about the Board of Health, is that we come under so many different state mandated regulations. It makes it hard for us to know, okay, what do we do if we've got this problem? Do we have to go to the state? Do we have to follow the policy that we approved because they told us we had to approve it? Oh, well, what? So we want, I think we want the same thing you all do, and what I'm hearing from you all is, you don't want to hear complaints coming to you for something that you don't feel like you can do something about.
I don't feel like that's necessarily the issue. We don't have a problem taking complaints. I think the issue is, we're taking complaints and have nothing we can do about it.
Sure you can. Let us know. Let the Board of Health know when you get problems. Do you go through your executive or however you choose to do it? But let us know. We can't, we can't start resolving issues that come up. They don't love it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, one thing, Mr. Hermanson, who is, you know, some of these people, especially employees, they'll come to us in fear of retaliation, and they know that we will keep everything confidential and see how we address this. And it's, it's been ongoing. And, you know, we had a talk in one of our meetings, you know, don't, don't list your personal cell phones, don't do this, don't do that. And I said, well, sure, I want to list my personal cellphone. I want people to call me and let me know what's going on. That's the only way I know that what's happening. And so, but some, some stuff that people call about is, is really not worth really, I shouldn't say it's not worth listening to, but I can't go anywhere with what their complaint was or whatever. So I just, we're in a tough position.
I don't have a whole lot to really say about this, but I am curious for the rest of the board. Do you guys have any input based on what you've heard from our board today? Please.
It sounds like most of the problem is communication, and that's generally the problem with most businesses. It's all about communication. What I'm hearing from y'all is, there's 22 or 23 departments that answer for this young man, and this one doesn't. And so is there a way that our board can stay, commissioners stay, just like when we vote on people to be on this board, that's brought to y'all? We suggest you all make the final call. So you do have to say so, but it's like, can we not have Warren be the answer for our board, just like he does for every other division?
We're not going to ask Warren's opinion on that.
Well, it just seems like that, if he's doing every other one, you're not looking for, but it's like, you are the mediator between the two, and it seems like that would be a really good answer to our problem. But I think all of us are willing to take a call, but it's just like, we're not getting them, so we're, we're thinking everything's peachy keen and.
I think another thing that you have to consider is, is that we are, you know, we're elected, so we take a lot of calls, and this is every day, you know? We can get Warren. I'm, I'm pretty new, so I can get one on a daily basis, but, but that's not something that, that you guys are probably able to do, for the most part, and just go talk to the director every single day and make sure things are going. And that's the issue, I think, that we have, is it's not about all the things that you're doing as a Board of Health, because what you're doing is great. You're professionals, you know what's going on. It's the fact that when there's an issue, it cannot be addressed immediately. You're meeting every other month, you know? We're meeting every month, and sometimes more than that. We're talking to our director, our guy, our county manager on a daily basis. So when we have these issues and we're getting the calls, even if we call you, even if we were to reach out or they were to reach out to you, it's not something, you just drop what you're doing and say, hey, we got to get in here and deal with it. I think that's another obstacle, it's a hurdle, that without us being in direct control, it just makes it really, really hard to do. And it has to be, and I think our council has some information on the, if we were to go that route, an advisory type committee, that I don't know what it's called, but what the Board of Health would become if we stayed the same, it would just fall into an advisory type thing, where you're still doing the same things that you're always doing, and then we would be the people that are, that are doing the personnel issues and the funding that we're already doing and things like that. So can you give us some information on what an advisory committee would look like?
Yeah, so it would, it would probably look a lot like it does now, to be honest. It would still require, in fact, the statute, the statute's 153-877, and it says, when a Board of County Commissioners has assumed direct control of a local health board and does not delegate the powers and duties of that board to a consolidated health service board, which would be basically a combination of the Commissioners and the health board, it shall appoint an advisory committee consistent with the membership described in 138-35. And 138-35 is the statute that Jerry was referencing early, where you've got this composition of all of these various professionals who, and it refers back to that exact same statute, so it'd still be composed of 11 members, one physician, dentist, an optometrist, a veterinarian, a nurse, a pharmacist, and county commissioner, professional engineer, and three representatives of the general public.
Does any other board member have any comments?
Do you have other arms? I'm sorry. Do you have other arms that currently operate like we do, or are all of the other 22, are they, do they all report to you, unlike, is there anybody who's doing the way we're doing?
Yeah, the D S S is similar. They have a board that oversees their operations. I wish I had the share. Of course, you have the sheriff's office, which is...
And then that, that reports to you, that they handle their own disciplinary actions?
They pretty much handle their own stuff. It's practically the same situation with D S S.
Planning board would be similar to what we're talking about, or those, the one, in other words, we like to have a planning board, and we have a, that, that, that advises this board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your answer. I thought you were talking about departments, like other departments that are similar to the Health Department. Of course, D S S is, he's correct. The planning board, the planning board's similar because we have a plan, code enforcement, planning, permitting, development department, have the planning board, which is an advisory group for, you know, Dan, you're correct, Eric.
Yeah.
Or it'd be similar to the school board? I mean, I know they're part state, part county as well. The schools are as well, part state, part county, but do they, they have their own board that governs their own jurisdiction?
But they're, they're an elected body.
Exactly. They're an elected body that's been running in campaign. So I feel like it's, you know, where your board's more or less appointed by this board, they're directly appointed by the people.
Okay.
But give us feedback. How do you feel? I mean, we, I think we're just reaching out for help.
Right. So, we had a subcommittee that Jerry, it was me and Jerry and Mr. Grissom, and we kinda discussed, this had come up, the idea of, you know, discussion of the complaint process, or how to take complaints as a board. And, you know, I don't, you know, I'd hate for us to have to, you know, reinvent the wheel here, if it's something that can be as simple as us reevaluating our complaint process, and, you know, going forward with something that we can do as a board and function the same way that we have been, you know, just to continue on that, you know, just revise and relook at our complaint process like we have before, and, you know, attempt to help you all out and make this discussion between us and you, and, you know, whoever, you know, like Jerry had said, we could post our, you know, phone numbers, that we can have, you know, be accessed, and things of that nature, and we could, you know, move forward with something like that. Or at least attempt to do that in the beginnings.
Well, I think you could still do that as an advisory to this board, 'cause this board would still be dependent upon the Health Board.
Again, I also think that, you know, the complaint part of it is, is just part of it, you know, getting the complaints and building the complaints is just part of it. It's the action that happens after the complaints. Again, if you guys are professionals and you're doing your daily job, I mean, it's just gonna be hard to take the action. That's, that's my biggest thing. We have the person in place that takes the action on every other thing that we do, every other department that we have. So, that's kinda where I'm coming from. The, the complaints are one thing, it's the action after the complaints. How are we gonna solve some of these problems? Because that's, that's the issue. We have, we have issues, we have problems. That's why we're here tonight, we have problems. So, it's about addressing the problems that we have. So I don't know, just changing the course of the way the complaint happens to solve the problems.
I understand.
And I'm not trying to be combative in this.
No, no, I, yeah, and I understand, that would be something, obviously, that would be the first step, and then from there, the board would then continue on, on how, how we address that process. And I don't know, there may be already things in place, I don't know if there's policy in place on how that works. I haven't researched into that part. We were just on the subcommittee for the complaint process, but, I mean, that could be something else that the board looks into, once we, you know, look into that, I don't...
What was your resolution?
My resolution for, you know...
Your complaint department? What did the subcommittee come up with?
So, we had, we had, we haven't had a meeting since we discussed, the subcommittee discussed. We had, at the end of this month, we're having another meeting to bring that back up. It'll be a topic of old business, the subcommittee, and after the last meeting, and we kinda throw some ideas around, and we'd have to get, obviously, from the board, and this, you know, obviously, we could take this, and this meeting that we're having into consideration on how we move forward with addressing that complaint process.
So, another quick question. Based on Commissioner Green's, issue that he brought up about the morale being low amongst employees in the Health Department, is that something that you guys are aware of? And if it is, like, how did you guys handle it?
Again, I think that was like what we, we was talking about. You all have been getting the complaints, and then, you know, kinda like Jerry had said, we haven't been, been notified of those complaints.
So, yeah, okay, so you guys weren't aware of that?
Yes.
General, thank you for bringing this to our attention. You know, it's enlightening to understand that maybe some of the issues going on internally at the Health Department, that maybe potentially we as a board, we're, we're kept in the dark about. You know, we, we did talk at our last meeting, and it was an open meeting, and it would be in our minutes, that we discussed the complaint process, that we wanna be able to be contacted. Barry, you make a great point. If we get that information now, what do we do with it? So I think as a Board of Health, as professionals in the community, as volunteers, we would need to, to make a decision on whether or not that we would have the consensus, the collective consensus, to address potential personnel issues, or if that's something we may need to go through general statutes to look at a different arrangement. And I think you, you bring up great points and great things to discuss, and I appreciate your acknowledgement of, of us not having that information. I think that's key. We did discuss in the meeting that several of us were open to having our contact information listed, again, that those minutes are listed publicly, and we haven't reconvened as a board to discuss that. So, you know, maybe it's a, a good idea to give us that opportunity to discuss that as a board, and, and how we might wanna address some of these concerns that we don't know about. But I do wanna appreciate you, I do appreciate you bringing these things to our attention and calling the meeting so that we can be aware of it.
I'm new to the board, and this discussion is new to me. So, I'm sitting here thinking, what's going on? Obviously, there's a communication problem, I hear that. As a medical doctor, I prefer to be an advisor, and let you guys handle the other part of it. I don't have a problem with that, but I'm not sure how you would set that up organizational-wise. But I, as a, as a doc, I wanna be an advisor. I don't wanna be involved in procedural or structure of the Health Department and the staff, that sort of thing would be lost if you asked me to do that. So I would have to turn to you. So if you're open to as advisor, I'll find one of that. Thanks. Appreciate that.
I just have one comment to Mr. Sherrill.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm kind of new to the board also, but you, I've been at the last three meetings with you. And if you were fielding concerns and problems from the people who are contacting you, why have those not been brought to us at the board meetings?
Because, one of the reasons is I didn't know that our other commissioners were getting these complaints as well. So I was dealing with some of these people as an individual, and thinking, okay, maybe we're gonna settle this out, and stuff like that. And then, through what we have, we have actually found, as, it's just a waste of my oxygen to bring this stuff up, because nothing I can do about it. We have a county...
But you could have, as the liaison, is that not your job, to bring those concerns to us as a board?
Well, these are things that I talked to my manager about. And I, and I actually have to ask you a question, if I may.
Okay, sure.
If you, as a board, got a complaint, do you address that with the person that did the complaint, or do you do it with the director of the Health?
Wait, what, in the complaints?
I, I understand.
At the brick meetings, I've been there.
Right. So, if I had brought those four, where would they have gone?
As a board, we would have discussed it, and then discussed it with the director.
Right.
Sure, that, I mean, that's, in my world, that works.
Right, that's, you're exactly right. And, and so, from that point, it's just like, if I get a complaint with any staff member in the county, well, then I have to go to the county manager. That's what he's hired to do. But if we get a complaint with the Health Department, we have no, no authority to, to go forward with it. And it's, it's very frustrating as a...
Yeah, it's fractured.
Yeah, and so, I think it's not completely broken, but it's very concerning where we're headed to as a, as a department.
All right. Hi, guys. I am new to the Health Department, so these are all new to me, hearing this today. What you're suggesting is operational and around H R, and I do agree that you probably have a little bit more expertise in that area. I think when I think about healthcare, though, there's a lot of complexities to that, and there are things like social determinants of health, there's access to medicine, there's rural medicine, and I would, I would hope that we would still have that ability to share our expertise in those areas to where you guys might not. I, I could see how a partnership could make sense. I also am hearing that there's, like, concern for retaliation, and I would say, to make sure that we're upholding the integrity of the department, we need to fix that now. There has to be a way that people can anonymously let us know what their concerns are. I think that needs to be number one thing we've gotta fix. I would be open to, like, further communications with you guys, or even maybe sharing phone numbers or what we need to do. Public health is very interesting, and it's not for the faint of heart. And so I think the fact that we are all volunteering our time to be here is, we, we are not getting votes, right? We're not doing this for anything other than the good of people, and to make sure that we're taking care of them. So I would just like that to be taken into consideration as well. Thanks.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to be face-to-face. And everyone here, I'm still trying to decipher the code speak that's going on here. I'm a physician, and my job is to understand the truth, kinda like a, like a lawyer, you know? But I'm, I'm stuck. I don't understand what's going on here. When I sometimes talk to families, when there's a big conundrum in how to care, I use the full time. I tell families, there are several truths, and that's true. The patient's truth, the family's truth, the peripheral staff's truth, what they observe, what their story is, my truth, and then there's an objective one, one that's kind of out there, that's probably more the accurate one. A little combination of all of these, right? I don't understand your truth right now. I don't, I don't get it. I don't understand it. It sounds like you want hiring and firing authority. That's what it sounds like. But I'm not sure. If I had complaints from the public about the commissioners, I wouldn't want authority to hire and fire you guys. But that's what it sounds like you want toward us. See what I mean? There's complaints, so I can't do anything. Give me the authority to do something about it, to fix it. But that's not how it works. We have a director. Kathy, there she sits. Have you seen her performance reviews? Have you talked to her, her employees directly, other than the ones who complained? Her record is impeccable. I've known her for 20-plus years. She has more integrity than most people I know. You're blessed to have Kathy as your director of this Health Department. To imply that she's not doing a good job, to me, is ludicrous. If people, if, why do people have poor morale in any workplace? They're not paid enough. Somebody here said that you have the financial part of our authority. There's the answer. Pay them more. You said there is not, that it wastes too long. Hire more people. It doesn't seem that complicated to me. That's not some stronghold problem that the world has to shift, and the structures of boards have to change, and bylaws, and, no, we, we have a process. Kathy's the person in charge of the Health Department. We support her, we show up, we listen to the agenda, we put in our, our input, and we move on, and we just, we develop projects as, but she's the one here who's, who's doing what you guys are thinking about doing. It sounds like you're wanting to subvert her or override her authority. I don't understand that. If there are a few disgruntled people, tell me what organization doesn't have that. Right? I'm disgruntled of stuff that happens in my job. Doesn't mean I have to go to the highest power and expect everything I want to happen. Have you investigated that? Have you shared it with Kathy or, or Jerry? I mean, that, that's what you do. You pick up the phone and say, what the hell's going on? Right? It's, it's a simple process. This is, this is not complicated like you're making it out to be. That's what's confusing to me. This is simple human interaction, it's communication, it's problem-solving in a mature, adult way, instead of just talking about problems that we haven't heard yet, or two. There's something else going on here, with respect, and I, I don't see there is a problem. If you're fielding complaints, get them to us. That's what we're here for. There's a process, let's do it. You're creating some extra process where it has to be solved by changing everything. I don't see that. I don't see that. We have everything we need. You've got an excellent director. If you have personal friends who work there, who are calling you disgruntled, that needs to be handled appropriately, not by changing the structure and firing people. You see what I mean? We're giving you authority to do that. The process is intact. We have a good Health Department here. I think you have good people on our board. And by the way, you guys, you guys approve our, our nominations. You have a lot of authority, a lot. So painting yourselves as these kind of helpless people, oh, there's problems, and we need, we need your help, I don't, I don't buy that. So, I, I wish you guys would speak more clearly, more honestly, so I could understand what's going on. I think it's communication, and, and just follow the processes that we already have. We have good, dedicated people here, and we're here at your service. Thank you.
Here, here.
Can you explain real quick what that would look, because we've heard from a couple, you know, we, we're in the advisory role, obviously, especially we have to have you guys around, because that's not what we do. Could you explain what that would look like, Mr. Sherrill? Is that a, I mean, are we, would we be taking over the Board of Health? Would it be a joint effort? How's that, how's that rate?
So it can be, there's a couple of different options. If you're looking at the statute, it can be, well, under that statute, I was talking about 153-877B, in the exercise of jurisdiction, the board may either consolidate certain provisions of human services in the county, under the direct control of the Human Services Director appointed and supervised by the county manager. Two, it can create this consolidated Human Services Board, having the powers conferred within the statute, which would be the consolidated, the, the blending of the two boards to, to one separate board. It can do a hybrid of that under three, and then it can also can assign other human services functions to be performed by the consolidated board. Under A is the one, where you bring it under the, I'm sorry, B1 would be where you bring it under the purview of the county as a whole, and it would basically be exist as a department within the county, similar to the other, other departments within the county. And then that would then require that, what I was talking about earlier, that would require the, the advisory board, which can compose it the exact same makeup that the current board is.
And that would need a public hearing?
Yes, so if you were gonna do that, there would, you'd do a motion to consider it, basically. Then you'd hold a public hearing on getting further input from the public about pros, cons, that type of thing, and before you'd made it, before you'd make a decision.
Is it a consideration or a resolution?
You'd pass a resolution to consider it, and then, then you'd hold the public hearing, and then after the public hearing, you can vote it up, down, do whatever. You could put it off, you could not hold the vote, you could, it would just be a, be an item on the agenda for consideration after the public hearing.
Make that a motion?
Make the motion. You can make a motion to consider, or to hold a public hearing on the issue. And if you were to do that, it would, there would be a 30-day notice in the paper. The paper wouldn't publish until next Wednesday. That would not allow 30 days before the August meeting, so the earliest you could technically have that public hearing would be at the September meeting, for consideration to whatever you all get input from the public on.
Would it be possible for you guys to attend our next meeting and go into detail over these complaints? And let us talk about this first, before, like, we, we move into the next step? Because at this point, we still don't... Because at this point, we still don't, the, the issues.
Yeah, and I, I understand, you know, what you're saying and where you're at. The only thing that, that I fear is, is in the meantime, like, if we don't go ahead and take action, I really do fear that we're all those employees. Morale is, is low.
I'm sorry, how do you define morale? When you say there's poor morale, how, how do you define that?
Well, what I've been told by several different employees inside is it's a very toxic work environment.
You're welcome.
I don't know that I can get into a whole lot of that kind of personnel. It's the only relevant piece of information here.
So you can have discussions with them privately, but I don't think it would be proper, if we're to go into closed session, I don't think it would be proper for us to go into closed session to discuss personnel with this board, just because you all are not the, technically, even though you, even though you account for the payroll of the health department, technically, they're not your employees. So therefore, I don't think it would be proper for you all to go into closed session in joint session with the health board to discuss personnel issues, because I don't think, I think that in order to do that, you'd have to have the exception to the open meetings laws, which would require that, that both boards have authority to go into closed session. In this case, I think it would be only the health department that would have the authority to go into closed session to discuss personnel issues within their board. So they could, but I don't think you all could, because they're not your employee.
So that means there's complications on both sides. So I don't think, you know, and I've listened to what you just said, Mr. Marcus, but I don't think there's a hidden agenda on any side at this point, because we're just trying to get to kind of goal. But there's obviously complications on both sides and we're not understanding truly, like, first of all, what our limitations are versus what your limitations are. And just even go into closed session, in my mind, before this meeting, I was thinking completely opposite of what the attorney just said. I thought it was a simple thing for us to be able to do with you guys, but because of the way the setup is, we can't even really do that. So I understand what, what you're asking, but it's obviously not that simple, because if it was, we'd be able to do that tonight. It's not that simple.
And just to address, Mr. Marcus, so again, it doesn't sound like a hidden agenda. You know, picking up the phone and asking what, what is going on has not worked. We have brought the director, I know for a fact, in front of this board and nothing has changed. Nothing has, nothing at all has changed. So I think where I stand is I would just like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution to consider taking over, or the board commissioners becoming the board of health and the board of health becoming an advisory committee and that we put that on the agenda for a public comment at our September meeting.
So a motion for public hearing at the September meeting.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Breeden.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Sherrill. Further discussion.
I guess my concern is, I do not know the job description of Mr. McGahay. I don't know where to find it. And I feel like that I have to have something that shows me what you can do and you can't do in your job description. And to me, you just carry that out. And if you're not carrying that job description out, the people right here should know that and come back to you and say, these are areas here that you're responsible for within your job description via the state and we expect you to carry that out. And I think, and if you're not doing that, then I think you have to have a chain of command. You have to change there. Something has to change. If y'all are not satisfied, you're the professional people and her job description determines what her job is. I do not know what her job description is. And to take ownership of that with my lack of knowledge, I'll say this for myself, is insulting, because I don't know what it is. I've never read your job description, what it is. So I have a hard time making the decision, voting decision on something that I don't know what your job description is. So if we vote to do something about a job description, I'd like to have a little time to see what your job description is and see what it is. If it's there in black and white, then you're expected to adhere to that. Then if you aren't and the complaints are coming to this board, then this board here has to have a knowledge of that, but it pertains to your job description. And the gentleman here talking about the leadership and that will expose the age and age that, but it'd be your board that then would have to make a decision if you need a leadership change or not. Am I right or wrong? I, I don't know. I do not feel Gary Shields has adequate, adequate information and knowledge when I look at Matt and I look at the doctors and stuff like that. I'm not that, I'm not that person. I don't have that knowledge. But I look at Mr. McGahay and say, if you have your job description, that's what you need to follow. And if you're not doing that, maybe it's time to say goodbye. I don't know. But that's something y'all have to, and for that, for that piece of information always coming to us and with Mr. Cade, work with him, he's got enough on his plate without taking over another department. But you people, I'm going to call you the intellectual group because of what, what you are, what you're doing. You're a doctor. You know, you are an intellectual piece of this. And I think it's your responsibility that your leader is carrying out their responsibility. But I think it's overflowing through some ways this coming to us, but we, I, I don't feel like I'm the knowledge level of knowing what Mr. McGahay, your job description is. So if this group here knows, then they should have you adhering to that job description, in my opinion, and carry it out. And I think with that piece of information, if change comes, it can be in person or it can just be a change within the person. And that's fine. We've got enough to do without playing, without being the health department. I'm saying, I'm calling for myself, without being the health department piece. You've got two liaisons that's going to be with you on your, on your board. They don't know right quick what your job description is and if you're adhering to that job description is. And so my feeling is that you people know what your jobs are. Just make sure you know what Mr. McGahay's job description is, then hold her to that. And if that doesn't work, then you know, you may have to terminate or enrich the person's understanding of the job description. You people are the intellectual people and you've been around this business a long time. You're here to fix a problem and, and you can, or at least try. If it doesn't work, then you know what happens after that. Time to replace somebody. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement?
Yes, sir.
I'm the only non-intellectual on the board. But I've got 50 years of senior administration in healthcare. That's not an, I'm very intellectual. Dealing and, and dealing with employees and people and organizations and management is the second hardest job there is. I used to teach, well, another thing, I used to teach on the graduate level, young budding hospital administrators. And when we talked about that, I always say, it's the second hardest job you'll ever do, managing people. And they always want to know, what's the first hard job? Being a mother. The second hardest is managing people. It's a tricky thing. She knows what her job description is. We know what her job description is. She's evaluated every year. We use a format that's used at many of the local or the regional health departments. It includes things like, did you meet the goals that were established at last year's meeting? What they are? And then what we want you to do in the coming year? We did that every year.
Can I ask who evaluated her?
Sure.
Can I ask who evaluated her?
Sure, absolutely. We have, we have a subcommittee or a committee of the board that meets. It's usually the chairman, could be the vice chairman, it could be, it's usually another physician that's on the board. They meet, go through the process of doing the evaluation with her present, go through the whole thing. And that, that evaluation or proposed evaluation is taken to the full, full board of health and they vote on a year and a day. That's, that's our process for evaluating her. Her job description, you have an educational background, correct?
Sir.
Yeah. The job description for a teacher is totally different than for the principal. Not just that, you know, one teaches students in a classroom, one administers, but they have overarching responsibility for the organization, as does the, the director, the health director does. Those are a little bit more challenging to manage. And she takes, she takes, I think she takes advice when we know that, when she has an issue that she wants to talk about it. And she'll talk about it at the, at the board of health meetings also. And managing a large organization, I think we have about 60 or so positions in the, in the health department, that's not a huge organization. The largest organization I write have 3,500 employees, a large hospital. But it's still challenging, because you have multiple types of professionals. Managing professionals is different than managing non-professionals. It is, it is challenging. I dare say that none of you, nor I, could manage that group particularly well, because we don't know all the professionals involved and their, their needs, their desires, what motivates them as a professional, but also individually. If you're going to do a good job managing people, you need to know what individuals also are, are motivated by or demotivated, how their morale is affected. All those things are important. And our board, the board of health, holds her responsible accountable for those things with a formal process. But I just wanted you to be aware of how we do that.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more? Mr. Skizer, would you mind addressing, I've heard the HR part of that board, about the difference between the board of health and, I guess, the HR mistake? Do you mind addressing that?
Sure. So the county has a policy that county employees fall under, which includes a disciplinary action process of just pause for dismissal. County employees are considered employees at will in general, but there is a disciplinary process that if somebody's not performing a job, you go through with written things, conferences, corrective action plan, those kind of things. Health department falls under the local government administrative code, which dictates what their disciplinary action has to be. It's very similar to what county employees fall under. But employees at the health department, when they have been employed for one year, they become a career status employee by general statute. And that means that they have a property interest in their position and they have to go through that disciplinary process before they can be dismissed, except in grossly inefficient job performance, something that's pretty severe that, that could result in immediate dismissal. But the procedures are similar, but you just have to make sure that you're abiding by that administrative code, which has a few other little things in it, but they're very similar.
And as far as their HR versus PR HR, are they set up the same?
Their, the HR function at the health department is a little bit different. They manage their interview process, which is similar to the interview process that we do at the county. Once they make their decision on who they want to hire in a position, then that recommendation comes to us and we have to prove off on that as far as the, that they have a position that is budgeted, that the salary is correct, all of that. Their, the employees at the health department by the state job spec also have to meet certain educational guidelines and requirements, similar to what you have in county positions. They have to have delegated authority or they have to send that person's application packet to the state to determine that that applicant meets the eligibility criteria for this position. And I believe currently, Ms. McGahay and Ms. Falcone have that, have that authority to determine whether or not somebody's qualified for that position. So they don't have to send a lot of applications to the state, but there is that key that you have to have the documentation and proof that the person qualifies for that position. But once they do their process there, then that paperwork comes to us to approve and sign off on it with the finance officers.
That make a comment? Well, we're investigating, you're investigating the process of how to basically fire Kathy and you already made a motion to change the structure of our boards. We haven't heard the specific complaints yet. We haven't had a time to discuss it or anything and you haven't discussed it with Kathy or heard from her. I think all of this is premature. Thank you.
So I understand you have a motion on the floor and a second, and this discussion has to be relevant to that motion. And I think my question would be, I want to go back to something that you mentioned. She had, she had asked, is it possible for, we, we are hearing that you can't talk about maybe personnel issues. Commissioner Breeden, you used the word cross-departmental. You can't speak about them in an open meeting because they are personnel issues, but we can't go into closed session together because of the general statute. So I guess maybe my question for Mr. Reddour would be, is it possible at our next meeting that our two liaisons could be at our meeting to present some of these concerns to us so that we're a little bit more well-versed about maybe what's going on?
Yes, I think you could do that. The liaison, at least, I think, I think one of them's actually an ex-official member and maybe they both do, now that we have two, but at the very least, you all can go into closed session and you can take back anyone in closed session that you think is relevant to the, for the purpose that you're going into closed session. You have the right to invite, even if, even if they didn't. I'm shooting from the cuff here that they have the, the right automatically, but at the very least, and I can look that up, but to be, I'm positive that they can go back if you ask them to. So you could, you could just, you could bring them into closed session with you regardless. And there'd only be two, so it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be considered a open meeting of the county commissioners, because there's only two. If there were three, then that would be a problematic.
Can I ask one more question? Just trying to compare to what other counties do in the state of North Carolina, do you have any idea how many have adopted this practice that you're proposing tonight?
I don't, but I could ask Chad GP.
So eight out of 100, right? Fifth grade, coming back to me now?
Eight. An advisory.
So I would say like the overwhelming.
Their county commissioners are acting towards health.
Eight of them. Do you want me to name them? Okay.
I would say that like it would be interesting to look at these complexities of why 92 have decided not to do this and, and really try to get down to why you need medical professionals on the health board and sharing their expertise around different things. I don't feel like any of you guys would want to be making big decisions if there's a measles outbreak in Mecklen County, right? And so we need to think about maybe those really kind of high-level pictures of, you know, who's going to be stepping in and who's going to have like ultimate control there. Also though, there are some issues that we need to address and I agree with Matt in the fact that we need to learn them and see what the next steps are and what we can do to help in that manner. But definitely consider the fact that, you know, rather than rushing to a solution before we've even tried, if this is the minority of what most places are doing, there, there's probably an ultimate reason for that. there's probably an ultimate reason for that. Thanks.
Yeah, so what's the theory where it states if you identify the problem, the problem is half solved? And I feel like that's a lot of the problem right here is your board is unaware of the problems. And I think that's kind of what this effort is tonight. It's hard to fix a problem that you don't know exists. And, uh, the snowball's moving really fast. When is your next meeting?
Uh, the last Tuesday of this, July 28th, 29th.
Okay. So your proposed public hearing will be September 1st. You know, I feel like I'd like to have a lot more input from your board, your board of professionals, but on the same token, you know, public hearing isn't bad to hear from the people. You know, public hearing doesn't mean it happens. It also sets a tone of urgency, you know, that I feel like your board, it would be easy for you to say, look, you know, we're on the line right here. And I think it would help create that tone in the department. And it doesn't mean it's going to go through. I think you can have more than one meeting potentially, a special call if needed in between. So I don't have any problem supporting that for that reason. I think it'd help your board say, look, we're next on the line. And, uh, what do y'all want to do? But in the meantime, I would like to have a list of your phone numbers. And I personally like to hear from each of you individually and just, you know, get some feedback and see what you want to do. I mean, to me, this is, this is, you know, a 50-50 partnership and we're asking, I'm asking, all right? I feel like it's, I want to hear back from you. So that's kind of where I'm at on this. I don't have a problem supporting it for that reason. Um, and I'll give you guys some time to meet once, maybe twice, and you could report back to us and we can do this if you need to. All right. Any other discussion? Um, I'd like to restate the motion on the floor. Can we read, read the motion? Does anybody have it handy?
Okay. So I think the motion on the floor is to consider, or is to have a public hearing at the September meeting for the purposes of considering whether this board would adopt the county health department as a department within the county pursuant to NCGS 153A-77.
Let's put in the file. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Wait that the record will click. Bye, okay. All right. Sorry, I didn't see your hand go up.
Excuse me. I'm on my way. Some more, yeah.
No, no, moving along here.
Oh, so then, um, the health department thing would close their meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I'm sorry. Any other comments from your board, Mr. Reddour?
Any other comments before we adjourn?
I think I'd like to extend a sincere thank you to you guys and gals from the county that wanted to be here tonight. And it's pretty incredible your list of professional skills.
Can I have a motion to adjourn? Or a special session? Okay. I'll put some feet right, say aye. I'll adjourn.
Thank you. I'll give a moment, a moment or two so you guys can leave. Please. Maybe you guys can call this, or I can have more to reach out.
Thank you for your comments, especially your job. Don't miss the meeting.
So good to see Burning Town. Allen, um, looks like we got an update. Got progress at work from the Burning Town, Iowa Fire Department. How Mr. Warren Kay?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my name's Alex Allen here. But basically, I, I think the deadline or there's a date given, the end of July. Obviously, this is the only meeting you have for the end of July based on the work session we had. So we felt like it was appropriate for those folks to be going top of. I know, uh, y'all have been made aware, I think if you go through mail yet, the community meeting, which is very common off of the night.
I think we'll have an open house prior to this. Y'all are all these ladies.
Yeah, we sure hope. At least a couple of you, I mean, it would make a nice showing, yeah.
Basically, Mr. Chairman, I, if you want an update for that, I would.
Give you a very short update. We had a inspection yesterday afternoon. Everything that was efficient reports are up to date. The two pumpers, which are our backup pumpers, but, uh, our backup pumpers have been pump tested and they passed with flying colors. So everything is accomplished that we've set out to do. Uh, we have currently on our roster 28 members. Some of them are, are new and are working on this 36-hour requirement. This time we have 16 of those that will count with their 36 hours. And by the end of July, we have at least five that are getting close. So we should have by July 31st, our required 19 plus a few extras. Get any questions?
The, Mr. McCastle, the 28 members you're referencing, um, are some of those junior firemen?
Our, with our roster, we have four. One of our junior firemen will turn 18 the 7th day of August and will be qualified also. So that will add another one to that list.
So it's 20, 28 plus four juniors?
No, no, no.
Okay.
That's including our juniors, 24.
Yeah, so 24 total members. And 16 of them have training hours.
They have the 36 required hours plus many, many, many more hours than that.
Okay. You're required to have 19 members according to state.
So right now we are pretty short, but we will be over that number by July 31st. And we have four pending applications that have not joined the department right now, but those applications have to be voted on and have to go through our initial process. So there's potential for more members.
So how long do you think it will be before at least three members will have their 36 hours training?
Two of them will probably have it this Thursday.
Okay. Um, so as of this Thursday, when you become back to state?
18, we elect one Thursday. And that depends, that depends on some online training for the next person in line.
Okay. So once you get the 19 that's required by the state?
Yes.
You will be sat, it will be satisfied as Burning Town, Iowa Fire Department. And at that point, Cowie will no longer have to run your calls. Is that correct?
As I see it, yes.
Well, congratulations, y'all come a long ways.
We told you there was a short timeframe and the training hours we've had. And I've got a whole bunch of people here, if y'all will stand up. And I've got community members here too. And board members, if y'all stand up, they have been busting it the month of June. And, you know, I think we owe them that a gratitude.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, I mean, that's, that's absolutely wonderful that you, you guys were able to, uh, come up to this. Um, just something for you to, um, to think about. The sole purpose of your service is to protect lives and property. And I ask you, and I asked you before, and it's, if you go into a burning structure, make sure that the member sits behind you, they have your back. And whoever's running that truck can get water to you.
They're getting the information. We have a water supply class starting not just coming, waste to the next 17.
And, um, and just one other thing, um, not really, uh, based on you, but you had made some, uh, comments about not being able to get training through SCC?
We're working that out.
I mean, they sent us a list a mile long of courses that they offered right here. And, um, so just after that comment was made, we got the, uh, reports from SCC that what they actually offered.
They looked at their brochure, there were about four courses offered that they sent in.
But no, congratulations.
We've got a person working very hardly. We've pointed a training officer and that training officer is working very closely with them to get the things we need. And the first one we got is water supply.
And, well, thank you. And at this time, um, I think Cowie Fire Department and their members deserve, um, an applause as well for covering this while you guys were having hardship and everything else to get your department back up. I mean, they've spent their money, they've spent their time and stuff out of the goodness of their heart with no compensation. So I think that is an absolute wonderful thing that Cowie Fire Department did.
You know, I think it's very powerful for you guys and gals to show up in person. So I think that's appreciated. I know it's appreciated.
Acknowledged.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank goodness the chance.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, let me, let's just clarify to make sure they, they were on probationary status. So since the will of the board to remove them from that probationary status, they meet their membership requirements by the end of July. Is that, we've never been past the eight-month mark, so we.
It might be appropriate to have a meeting next month, Mr. Kay, and confirm.
Would you like an update at the August meeting?
Yes.
I think if, if we're talking into the month when, when the time, you know, I think it'd be appropriate.
And maybe the inspection team can do the final inspection and stuff like that and, and just make sure everything is.
And I think my biggest concern, I don't want to take away anything right here, is just the numbers spiking and then gradually tapering. And I want to find a way to keep them increasing. And I think that's the challenge. And, uh, that's like you're doing a good job.
We have four applications coming in, we will be.
I just, I don't want to spike to get off probation and we're sitting here having the same discussion in December. So I think that's my concern, but if you don't mind, can I, maybe you can have your back?
We'll give you an update. We've already got that inspection scheduled. We scheduled that at the end of this.
Thanks for the information.
All right, moving on here. Yeah, I'll let you go. Let's see. Consideration and approval of additional repairs at Mecklen County Library. Mr. Joe Allen.
I got this emailed late this afternoon, didn't have time to print it off. If you give me this minute, I'd give us an update of where we're at. This was for the contractor. Uh, he should have the interior finished, uh, which is, basically, he's got some paneling to put up at the top where he was molded by July 11th. And he should have a scaffolding moved, uh, if you've been out there, Barry's been out there. He'd be a pretty elaborate scaffolding system, get a part of that, I think 18th, uh, which is what we've kind of asked him to do. The library has a plant tree, it's 23rd, and we're going to get to use that room. So it looks like that, that's going to have to be able to happen. Uh, exterior work, um, ties and gutters in, some dentures and painting, uh, he's expecting to be done by July 4th. There's still some cleanup stuff there and some pausing and stuff to do. So he's estimating complete ownership done in four or six weeks in the middle of August. That's what I'm thinking, should be done for the project. And I will, uh, try to go over this estimate with you and answer any questions you may have. Uh, I did go out there today and kind of break this down a little bit more, so we got a little bit more. And I did have the contractor send me some receipts and some estimates on this stuff. You guys might those, might pass those around to you. And I give you some of the reasons behind some of these changes. Uh, the reason, I'll just start first if you want to just go right down the list. So facer board replacement and installing new facer board, that was 176 feet of facer board on that canopy carport type of structure there. Uh, that had the old square steel top gutter on it with seams in it that was leaking and started rotting in the facer boards. Uh, concrete, there was, if you remember, at the entry door, there was some landscape areas on each side that was holding water and causing some water damage on that wall, entry wall. Uh, there were demo, the concrete areas to get that water, for it to get the water out there. That was about 116 square feet of demo. And then to pour all that back would be, it's going to be about four point seven five yards, best I can think of. Those knife plates, we got four knife plates that were not in the original contract. There was actually four beams in that entry wall that no one knew was rotting until we pulled that landscape back, it was rotting. It was knife plates that were the fix, get the rod off, stick the knife plate in, that's the concrete. Uh, so that's our knife plate changed there. Uh, gutter downspouts, they had in the contract to replace the downspouts. We've got leaky seams in the gutter, so we got, if we don't want to have the rotten facer board again, we're going to have to get that with some type of seamless gutter. So this, that's a quote for seamless gutter, uh, where we won't have the, the problem again of rotten facer boards. Silas fans, that is, to back up a little bit, last month, we were going to do this exploration with, to see what happened, what was happening, if we're getting water from the top or what was going on. Luckily, we're not getting water from the top. Roost on it, the architect, mobile testing agency, everybody we talked to believe that there is an air circulation problem. It's real high here over there, long away from any air vents. The air is just going to burn stagnate and cause some of the molding. They believe that if the plants up there are circulating, that air will fix the problem. So we don't have molding, siloing. So that grand total is going to come to 52,280 and 95 cents. And I will, I will say that I do not like the way that this, this proposal was written with the lower fees here. If you look at these estimates, he didn't add any markup to the estimates. These, these estimates are like, I would not be glad to get into them. They're, he just wrote down what they wrote down and he's added his markup at the end and all of it. Any questions?
So Joe, you're saying that every one of these prices are actually subcontractors? Is that?
Uh, no.
No?
Uh, the removal of the facer and replacing, that's contractor.
Okay.
Uh, concrete is contract, is subcontract. Knife plates is contractor, however, he had to have a weld, he's got to get a welder to weld those together. So that'd be a subcontractor for welding. So, that'd be a subcontractor for welding. Gutter downspouts subcontractors, silvans is subcontractor.
So, how many feet was the gutters and downspouts?
Hundred twenty, hundred twenty feet of gutter and, and then of course, I've got the downspouts written down. Sixty feet of downspouts.
So, 120 feet of gutters and 60 feet of downspouts. That's 180 feet.
Yep.
Ten, eighteen, fifteen, a little bit less, fifteen dollars a foot for gutters and Install the knife plates, twenty-five hundred dollars each. Is that what you said? About pretty close.
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
Somebody help me out there. They've got this thing tore off, right? And here's their resolution to fix it. That's kind of where we're at. And what are their options?
I was, I was going to add, Mr. Chairman, one of the things we still have to do, we think this wraps us up, we hope, on the initial library project. We do still have to do the flat membrane roof. That was in the capital improvement plan last year, but we held off on it because we didn't want to be up there working on the pitched roof and then turn out and damage the membrane that we just put on there. So, that'll be following, but that's a different, it's a different project. It's coming out of the capital plan this year. So, I hope this will wrap everything up, but we still have that flat membrane finish.
Where are you looking to pull these funds from?
So, if you agree for this, we would need to pull, let's pull fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars out of fund balance and amend the contract for Wind River construction for that amount to complete this project.
Mr. Sherrill, you feel a lot about it?
I rounded it up a nickel before, so we didn't have a.
Thank you.
I think it's something that needs to be done. I mean, go ahead and do it. And, uh, Mr. Allen, you've done a good job of updating this on my knee. And, uh, as you said a year ago during this conversation, that you feel like it's fair and it's professional.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's fair. There's nothing in here that's not needed. All this stuff is, tries to prevent the building from falling down.
We have to, we have to upgrade our facilities as we move through here, so.
And the problem is, these guys can get it done in a timely manner. Time is the problem. You bid each of these little items, two thousand, three thousand, eight thousand, and then you try to wait on somebody's schedule. You know, I mean, there's a time.
But they've got it all ready, ready to go, right?
Well, four or six weeks you can have it done, so.
Is this a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to move this project on board that you presented here, fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, ninety-five cents. Mr. Cabe, is it, do I say need to set another nickel?
Yes. Fifty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-one dollars budget amendment. I don't have it in the contract for Wind River.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Shields, second by Commissioner Anshwan. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Allen, for what you've done. Good job.
All right, hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye for the record. Oppose, like a sign. All right, put the record, we play five on the standing. All right, thank you, Joe. Update on engineering and design for Phase One A, One B, Rec Park Master Plan, Mr. Cabe.
Mr. Chairman, yourself and Mr. Sherrill and I had a conference call with McGill Architecture concerning the change order to the design fees for the pickleball courts and part of Phase One A and One B of the rec park. Obviously, the original design was for limited number pickleball courts. We went to, we added eleven pickleball courts. We moved the tennis courts to a different location, which changed some elevation issues with them to do the design. And we also proposed including the shade structure, the courtyard area, make some modifications to that parking area for, which is actually part of Phase One B of that process. So, McGill and Associates is requesting a fee maximum not to exceed of nineteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. So, if you're so inclined after discussion, we would need a budget amendment for nineteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars not to exceed from fund balance and an amendment to the contractual agreement with McGill and Associates to complete these design fees. I will, you, you two are familiar, but for the rest of the board's information, this has decreased by seventy-five percent less, I think, roughly in my head from what was original. So, still a lot of money, but it, it was eighty thousand dollars plus when we first started.
So, this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we do a budget amendment in the amount of nineteen thou, not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars to, uh, from McGill and Associates for Phase One A and One B Rec Park Master Plan.
Except from?
From the fund balance?
Mm-hmm. Fund balance.
All right, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Henry, five of them. All right, consideration and approval of lease agreement with Otto Bar and Rescue, Mr. Cabe.
Chairman, in your package, you have a revised lease agreement that we originally had on the June agenda. There were concerns about making sure the community club was aware of the lease. This is the lease, so that, like you kind of gave me asking, how's the ambulance in the, the fire department in Otto? I remember we did complete some extra staffing in the budget this year. We've been, we've been having one there, but, but a gentleman's agreement with them to let us be there. This is the official agreement to make that happen. We did work out some issues with the community club. They were concerned that they were added as a, the verbiage was they were a lease or as well, and they were concerned basically because of limited financial abilities on themselves, the contract or the lease agreement. If our department failed, they'd be responsible for maintaining the building, and they just weren't comfortable with that. So, we, we changed some of the verbiage with that. We addressed a community issue with them as far as the name of the community. They did take that back to the, their board. And the reason the community club's involved, and I'm sure you made it clear, they own the property where the fire department sits, and they've had a lease agreement with the fire department prior. So, that's why they have to consent to this agreement. They did have a meeting on, I think, last Monday. I do have the information from Tom Young, who is their chairman of the Otto Community Development Organization. He said they did approve the, the lease. So, at this time, I would like to ask for your approval of the lease between us and Macon County, Otto Fire Rescue, with the consent of the Otto Community Development Organization. And that's an amount of two thousand dollars per month, which was budgeted this year in our budget.
I'll make a motion to accept it as presented, the lease agreement.
I'll have a motion by Commissioner Shields.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anshwan. Any further discussion?
So, Warren, what is the completion date for their new station?
Don't know the exact completion date, but they've actually got the steel up, the structure's there. Obviously, I'm sure it'll slow down some. Kevin did tell me at eight, and Jamie actually left. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's roughly here, somewhere in that neighborhood, a little over here. So, at that time, we will, we will work with them as far as moving buildings and changing locations.
Okay. So, that's the future plans? Is Macon County EMS is going to house their ambulance in the new station, or we're going to lease?
The, the fire department, at the time we discussed this, they did say that they would like to have us in the new station. As a matter of fact, I think in all the budget discussions, we mentioned that some individuals would like to be there. I'm obviously hoping when that time comes, the bag with that space, and we decide if, if that's the best option or not. The, the community club, I did discuss that with them, I met with, with them. They're, they're concerned about what they're going to do with the building, the whole building, if the fire department's not there. So, if we stayed there, that would be a source of income for them possibly. But if we go to the new building, they might have some other uses for that building. So, so I think they're open to either option. I think we just need to get to that time and see what works best for us and what works for them, and then we can, we can readjust this.
So, I had a few of those members contact me as well, wanting to know what, that I would ask.
I would be okay either direction. I think we're just waiting for that time.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll make a motion on the floor in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. Any opposed? All right, new business. I have a discussion and update on Highlands Playground, Commissioner Sherrill.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, Mr. Stiller was, uh, was willing to come down the mountain to give us a complete update, so I didn't get everything twisted up. So, this time, I'd like to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate you guys having me. And Mr. Sherrill, thank you for having this put on the agenda. So, give you a little update on the playground. Back in 2022, we had a donor in the Town of Highlands come forward with fifty thousand dollars and wanted to start a campaign for a new playground. So, our playground right now is, I don't, I don't know if that's what you even call that thing that we have with the rec park, but it's a, it's a, a small, we have one, you know, one piece of equipment for kids to play on. So, as a commissioner of the Town of Highlands, I took the lead on this, and I was a member of the rec committee at that time. So, to this, to this day, y'all have been generous to, to contribute three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that project. The Town of Highlands has contributed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that project, and I personally have raised seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars from the local community. So, right now, we have one, one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. To finish this off, we applied for two grants. So, two years ago, or actually, I should say, a year and a half ago, we applied for a part of grant. We were not awarded that grant. So, we kind of postponed the project another year, and I tried to get a, um, a, I'm sorry, an inclusiveism park grant through the state that was just announced last month. We did not get that. So, I'm back here, we're about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars short, and I'm going to go to the Town of Highlands and ask for fifty thousand dollars. And I'm here to respectfully ask for fifty thousand dollars more from the county. This, this, this past week, I've raised another twenty-five thousand dollars from citizens in Highlands, and actually just got a commitment for fifty thousand dollars from an individual. So, if I could get fifty thousand from y'all and the fifty thousand from the Town of Highlands, it would close that gap, and I'm thirty thousand short. Like, I know I can raise thirty thousand dollars from the local community. So, again, I'm here respectfully asking for fifty thousand dollars from Macon County for the Highlands Rec Park Playground. Been happy to ask any, answer any questions.
More of this money would come from?
Fund balance.
And in your budget package, you'll say a budget amendment where we're rolling money over from one fiscal year to the next, the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars goes in this year, budget is actually rolling up into this year. So, we, we'll actually vote to approve that shortly.
Well, I guess the start date is contingent upon the funds, right?
Yeah, so when we get the funds, we'll start on the, the grading of the site and then order the equipment. So, I'm, I'm hopeful by the fall, we can have the funds in hand and start the grading process, and hopefully by next spring, open the playground.
Mr. Sherrill, what do you think?
I'm thinking that, well, you guys have done a tremendous job with the community raising money. And I think it is a project that is very worthy for the community and the county as a whole, because we have many, many, many residents that live outside the city limits. So, this time, I'd like to make a motion that we commit another fifty thousand dollars out of fund balance for the Town of Highlands Playground.
Second it.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Shields. He beat me to it. Any further discussion? And money's coming from fund balance that we established.
That's what she said.
All right, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. Any opposed?
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you, Joe.
See if I be careful going on. All right, discussion on expanded access to alcohol beverages through regulated on and off premises sales. Commissioner, bring it in.
Uh, yeah, so I've had a few conversations over the last few weeks and all about this, and spoke with our, we're accountable about the options to do such a thing. It's just, really, it's just a discussion. I think that it would be a, you know, you look up down the Georgia road, think somebody must have that or just got to make it. Back in the, you know, when I was growing up, the nineties, I was in there, there was a lot of things happened. As the years have gone on, everything's kind of fallen apart, fallen down, and I just think it would help, obviously, probably some tax revenue and some new businesses. We're talking about all the EDC, you know, how to bring in new business and things like that. I think this is quite one of the, one of the first steps to do such thing. Of course, this would have to go to a, we'd have to have a resolution drafted, I think, and brought to our next meeting, and then it would have to go to the ballot for votes to vote on at the next elections.
Well, as one of the liaisons to the Macon County Economic Development Commission, we've had numerous meetings and conversations about positive growth in Al County. I hear people, people saying all the time, we don't have anything. We don't have big restaurants. We don't have hotels. We don't have a bowling alley, et cetera. Four reasons that come to mind right off the bat. The county don't have water and sewer, affordable housing, lack of labor, and alcohol sales in the county. It is extremely hard for a restaurant and business to survive out in the county without alcohol sales, whether you drink or not. Do businesses in Franklin serve alcohol? Not all. Why would a person stop one mile outside the city limits to eat that wants a drink with their meal and stop outside the city? Most of them don't. I guess the question I would ask folks that are against alcohol sales in the county, how many of you don't go into a business because they serve or sell alcohol in the Town of Franklin, Town of Highlands, or any other business locally or anywhere, anywhere else that you may travel to? Just because I don't drink doesn't mean that I will not shop at a place that serves alcohol. I never thought that I would see the day that Cracker Barrel would serve alcohol. However, their corporate recognized that to stay afloat, they would need to add the sales of alcohol to their menu. I don't know if it helped them or hurt them. I haven't heard, but they did it, and I still love to eat a Cracker Barrel. So, I think if, if, honestly, if you want positive growth in this county, that's what it's going to take. And I see these little restaurants down there in Otto, great little restaurants. They can't survive because two miles up the road, they're serving alcohol. And, and so, I think, I think it's absolutely, it should go on a referendum in the 26th general election. And, and let the people decide if that's, if you want alcohol sales in the county, they're the ones that I represent. That's where I stand.
I mean, I think whether you're for it or against it, there's no doubt that we're lacking in Macon County because of this. People, so many of our citizens, everyone's always traveling outside of Macon County just to go do basic things, and that has a lot to do with it, because we cannot bring those businesses here. So, um... So I think it's something that absolutely should be on the ballot and let the people decide, you know, they decide. And I mean, I've heard what you guys have said about your business, and I mean, I've been here for a long time, and I've heard the same complaints over and over again about the fact that we don't have anything. But the problem is, if we don't take the steps to get things here, that's all we're going to do for the next 30 years, is keep complaining about it and watch businesses come in and out over and over again. And I think it's unfair to our citizens here that we're not providing these things for our citizens, and they're going to all these other counties that paid into all of their taxes, and we get absolutely nothing for it. So I say I'm fully, I'm fully in favor of putting that on the ballot and letting people decide.
Any other discussion?
I think there's more discussion to be had with what gets put on the ballot, and aren't there different levels of alcohol, what kind of alcohol, that I think there needs to be another another meeting. What is the, what's the timeframe to get that on the ballot? Does it have to be a certain time?
Well, and I think, I guess it depends on which one you're putting it on. I think you can put it on the 2026 prelim, or you can put it in the general, and we'd have to confirm with Melanie. But I think it would be, I think three months is certainly sufficient, but we can confirm that with her when it needs to be done. We have, we've discussed with her briefly, and actually, here she says, it might be 40, well, I'm scamming through this legal notice, but it may be 45 days, if that's off the top of my head, I'm taking that for granted.
At some point, could you provide us, you know, breakdown of our options and maybe what surrounding counties have done?
Yeah, and so you do have the options of on and off premise beer and wine. And you also have on and off premise liquor. Now, the off premise liquor, I think, would entail forming an actual ABC store that you all would run, whereas if you just did on premise liquor, then it would be liquor in restaurants type of thing. But you could do the beer and wine without forming an ABC board for that.
So could we do beer and wine and just the onsite liquor without forming an ABC store?
I believe that's correct, but yes, we'll specifically look at that issue in line.
Well, Jackson County, they don't have an ABC store. They're partnered in with Silva.
Yeah, they're just kind of peculiar in that in the 80s, in order to, the county, when they first passed theirs, in order for the town to pass a resolution to get the ABC store, they had to have, the county had to sign off on it. And so that was kind of one of those things that was just done, where the county said, yeah, we'll sign off if you give us 50% of your revenues. And so the county signed off on it without any discussion, and so it was the, it was maybe C board, and it was owned technically by both counties, but it was only in Silva. Then, oh, 12, 15 years ago, or whatever it was, the county did form their own, or they were going to form their own, and they were going to put up a liquor store in Cashers. And they said, you can either join us or lose out. And so what they did at that point was they kept the Silva County ABC board, they changed the split so that the county now gets more than 50%, but the town still likewise gets, Town of Silva likewise still gets some of those sale proceeds from the Cashers ABC store. So it's kind of one of those things that was done through the legislative, and it was in the 80s, and there was apparently a lot of, maybe the way things were done in the 80s, which maybe not is, that's the way I understand it.
Can you bring us a couple resolutions to our next meeting? Maybe the one with, you know, if it's possible to do the onsite for, to get a liquor license and then the on and off site, beer and wine, you know, something like that, maybe just the beer and wine, just whatever we can do. Obviously, I don't think we want to start an ABC store, so, but if these restaurants are able to sell onsite, sorts of liquor boxes or whatever they need, can you just bring us a couple resolutions, just so we don't get too far down the road and then miss an opportunity? And that way, if we need to adjust, we can adjust.
Yeah, there was, and I say that you do that, but there, my recollection is there's some issue that you have to buy, that they would have to buy from the local ABC store. So it might be that they can do liquor sales in restaurants within the county as long as they buy from the, any ABC store within the county itself. So it might just require liquor sales from the Town of Franklin's ABC store, but I'll look into all that and
I think the
Well, I think if they were selling in a restaurant, I think the ABCs, the state ABC may require that. That's my recollection. Again, I'm talking off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think you see a couple resolutions, different ideas, and then we can work from there.
And do a little researching and find some loopholes where we don't have to go into liquor store business we can join with.
New business, item C. Discussion regarding use and occupancy of multi-use room at Nantahalo Community Building.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll get it started. Mr. Steve Bigos with Nantahalo Community Club, they had approached us about an agreement, an official agreement to use the community room there at the Nantahalo Community Building. Obviously, there, up to this point, it's been a scheduling process back and forth between people that wanted to use it. So they they wanted to have a little more official agreement, so I would, Bigos come up, and if I people put our presentation up for one page there, he'll have a little information to advise about, and then we can go from there. And then after the talks, if you want to pursue that, I can walk you through the process, depending on the term of the lease, if you want to consider that, what we have to do on our end.
Thanks, Warren. And most of you, I've met most of you over there at the facility several times. Last year, the county was fantastic, and turned the facility over to us, half of the facility, half is the library. And we all did what you suggested, you know, we moved into the facility, we're taking real good care of it. Just some background first. So our club was actually formed in 1978, so it's really old. We're really, we're completely legally compliant. We're a real nonprofit corporation, we have a 501(c)(3), so everything we have set up is very legal. I don't think I need to go through the list, but everything we do, but just want to point out that we don't spend money on ourselves, it's not essential. We really do a lot for the community. All of our money, basically, is spent on giving back to the community. So last fall, again, you all proved the facility for us. We've used it about 50 times so far, and we felt like you all gave us the responsibility to take care of the facility. We clean it, the county doesn't clean it for us, unlike many of the other facilities. We maintain the inside of the facility. We've had some private events in there, and we do charge a fee for that. It's a minimal fee. We looked at what the other community clubs in the areas do, and we're actually at or below with those fees. And we're only doing that now for very private events, like a private party or wedding event, something like that, is anything we would charge for. We would never charge anything for the county. We have an agreement now with the library, we're not charging them anything. So I think we're really moving forward on the, the fees that we would charge, they'd only be used for the maintenance of the facility, buying supplies, there's a debt, and those funds aren't available with the other club funds, which I think is a bit checking for. So we're requesting from the county that you formalize the agreement, formalizing the agreement to continue the way we have it already with the official lease. And we used, I took the lease provided by Warren, it was the Cowie School lease, and I modified it for the community club. Warren has talked about that. And again, the county would always be a priority user in there. For instance, we'd love to get the Nantahalo voting over, getting the new county facility. It's one I believe, it's right now, the old EMS building, it's pretty much running now. So that's it. Question with this?
Has our attorney seen this? Their attorney seen this?
Yes, I've looked at it.
One of the things we do need to discuss, if you do want to enter into a lease, the term, obviously, we have to, depending on any kind of a term that you want to proceed with with them, we have different advertising requirements. If it's if it's one year or less, we can do it, but not if presented. If it's up to 10 years, we actually have to advertise the lease publicly 30 days, unfortunately, because of Lady Calvin, that means it'll be the September meeting, because we get the same, same thing we talked about with the health force stuff there. We have to advertise that to the public, and then we have to prove that it's probably the September meeting. And if it's 10 years plus, you have to do formal, this formal process to solicit the lease. It's a little complicated because of the government, depending on if you want to entertain that option, there's there's a process.
I just, you know, it's kind of all those things. To me, it's a community room in a small community, I don't necessarily think we need to enter a lease. You know, I don't, is it calendar right now, it's on the calendar? You know, another thing that we talked about is we entered a lease, you know, there's just a lot of things that can be leased. We're in leases, and I don't know that that's a thing that we we have to have. I think that there needs to be a calendar that's kept, it needs to be open to the community to use, you know, on a calendar basis, the fees that's going to be charged. It's a county of property, probably just go back to the county, just like the rec park does, or, you know, any other room that we we lease out for birthday parties or anything else. All of the alarm systems, I think, on that side, fire panels on that side, you know, there's just a lot of things we enter a lease. Just when it's the access, I think it's, and I just don't think it's needed. It's a small ring, it's a small community, I think it was built for the community to use whenever they need to use it. I think we need to establish a calendar, and whether the library keeps it, or the community building keeps it, or the rec park keeps it, it's just going to
We have a calendar. I think we've done most of what you talked about. I mean, the county has access to the fire panel at the time. The one time that they could not get in there, it's nothing to do with our community club. The county folks know who to talk to. The one time they couldn't fit in, they did not talk to the right people.
Well, and again, I don't know that they're, I mean, it's a county of property, I don't think that there should ever be a time where we have to talk to anyone to get into our maintenance, county services.
They don't, they have the keys. They have the same, they have the same key.
Yeah, I'll just tell.
What's your fee schedule?
Say it again.
What's your fee schedule?
It's $20 an hour for the first two hours, and then $10 an hour after that. It's actually quite low if you look at what other facilities are charged. And we actually, we came to the county before, you know, when this started last year, and we said, what do you want to do? Does the county want the money? We were told, no. We were told they don't want to deal with that. We don't have to charge, but you need to know that we have an investment in there as well. You know, we're trying to pay that back. We spent about over $1,500 to supply the building. So that's where that's coming from. It's a very low amount of money. I think we made, to date, $340 on the facility.
I mean, let me just blabber for a minute. I think I hear both sides, pros and cons, in my opinion. There's a pro for us, the county, not to have to worry about the schedule. But it's a con, if we hear complaints about a building that I think the taxpayers purchased, you know, and kind of sent to, and I have love for a community building. So it's kind of hard when the county doesn't handle the scheduling and the fee structure for somebody to have a birthday party. But that 20 bucks, 20 bucks an hour probably buys little trees and makes sure the trash is taken out, the floors are clean. You know, what I like is having the local, you know, investment that looks after the building, but, you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, would you be opposed to a one-year lease?
I don't think we'd lease at all. It's working right now. What would we even
Who would run it?
Well, they're running it now, the ladies at the library, or they've been able to get in there and do the things that they need to do, that was one of the, one of the big issues. However it's running right now, it's perfectly fine. And if it's a county, then obviously, probably the library would be the one to do that, because it's a county, you know, but it's, so I just don't, I don't see the benefit of having a lease for the only community room in the community that has a kitchen. I mean, so if now it's under the control of a club, and if they say, no, we don't want to do that, or no, we don't, we can't put you on here, because we, I mean, it just, it muddies the water. Right now, I think the library and the community club are communicating, you know, it sounds like, from what I've heard, everything is moving along, it's supposed to move along, they get access to the building when they need it. And I think the least just a little bit, it's what we, you know, what we're able to do with the building.
Well, let's back back up just a second. Why are we talking about a lease if everything's running smooth and everything's being, taken care of?
I think it just started running smooth.
Oh, okay.
No, I can, let me, let me say something about where the lease came from. So this is going to sound kind of odd. Some of the folks in the community wanted to do bingo, okay? We think it's a great thing for the community. The folks were so excited by it, we just, we couldn't believe it. I mean, you know, it's like a bygone days thing, people just love it. In North Carolina, you have to pay, you have to have, in North Carolina, a state license to have a bingo. It's $200 a year. You have to provide a lease for your property. So that's where this comes in, we started talking about it. Now, we don't have to do that. We think it's a great thing for the community, but that's, it's required to have a lease.
I'm the treasurer of the community club, as Peggy was for many, many years as well. We work very hard as a 501 to raise money. We have approximately 12 outreach programs, and it is very hard to raise the funds that we need. This lease is going to help with bingo. When we shared with the community club, we wanted to do bingo, the uproar and the clapping and everything was just unbelievable. And we went ahead, got a little ahead of ourselves, and invested in minimal investment, bingo stuff that we needed. Investigating more, we determined, oh, boy, we cannot be arrested and taken to jail for gambling if we don't have this done correctly. So we went the proper steps, told everybody at the meeting, we're not going to be doing bingo, and this is why. The disappointment was really, really huge, as much as the excitement. So this money that comes in is going to help support our 501 with our outreach programs. $1,000 goes to senior, I can give you a breakdown list, the nursing home, the things we do, the veterans' flags, or the cemeteries, things are needed, things are replaced, the upkeep of the building, which the rental fee is minimal. I go to the CDR, CDR, whatever they are, the Macon County meetings for all the community clubs. And I've talked to the other clubs and the officers, and I said, could you all send me a copy of what your agreements are for rentals? And they did send them to me. And we looked at them, and we were very surprised how expensive compared to what we had come up with our rentals were going to be. We had no problem with those six rentals, people were more than happy to pay the minimal fee. We had no issue with them doing what was required for them to do. And again, that money maintains what you all has entrusted to us to oversee. And we take that extremely seriously. Some people say I can be a little too serious about it, but to me, it's a gift. It's a gift to the community. And it's just incredible that we are able to have that building and do the things that we can do, put gift bags together for the nursing home, all kinds of things. I mean, I, it's just incredible what we do. The ladies are using it for their exercise. I'm glad that we were able to get through all of that and get it taken care of. And, you know, the potluck on Wednesday afternoons, y'all have been invited, Mr. Braden, you've been invited a few times to come over that way. way. Mr. Cave, I know you have been over that way as well. Mr. Cheryl, not Mr. Cheryl, you've been, you know, you've been that way. But Mr. Shields was over there for, I believe it was our flag raising ceremony. And we take things very seriously. And we just want to be able to have this lease so we can raise the funds we need to continue with our outreach programs. Because as y'all know, the price of things go up and up and up. And when we had a budget for something for $150 three years ago, it's close to double that now. So, you know, I'm not a spring chicken, but I'll get out there and do whatever I need to do to make sure those outreach programs are taken care of. So that lease will be a benefit. It's just not a nothing thing. It's an important thing for the community club so we can continue.
I don't see why we couldn't negotiate on the time, you know, if the 10 years we put on there was just a, I think, a coffee premium on the lease.
Anything short of term would definitely work. We don't need you guys to wrestle bingo up there.
Do you guys have cops in Manahala?
Just kidding. Here's where I'm at with this thing. I don't want to get in the weeds, and I understand you have a nice outreach, and I think you're doing a lot of wonderful things with it. I feel like ultimately, the taxpayers funded this. I could support this. If you cut your fee schedule in half, okay, right down the middle, like we did a year-to-year lease. And I think my intent is if you want to have an anniversary or a birthday party, you know, $10 an hour, I think, I know the Red Park used to be about that. I know it's not a lot of money. It's not supposed to be a lot of money. It was a gift to Manahala, and I don't want it to kind of have the appearance of a certain group discouraging. It's not saying you do that. But that's kind of where I'm at. I think the fee schedule needs to be cut in half, and we need to go year-to-year. If you could, some of those terms, I think I could support.
Could we compare these other community club buildings and stuff and what their fees are and at least make sure that?
I think ours is $10 an hour, or it used to be.
I think $10 for the smaller room, $15 for the bigger room.
That's what I'm saying, it's not. If you have an anniversary or a birthday party, and you want to go a couple hours early to set up, you know, and you reserve five or six hours, that's 50 bucks versus a $100 bill, and I think that money can go back into the, I mean, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, dude. We've actually been discussing it on our board about lowering the fees on the, so that we'd be perfectly happy with that.
Josh, I just wanted to make sure that you were clear that the library doesn't get charged anything. There are no fees to the library.
Well, and here's what else. I mean, we don't, this board, we, on behalf of the board, doesn't like noise, problems, conflicting. It's kind of a, here you guys go. Manahala's kind of the stepchild of the county. I mean, not being mean about it, just you're out there, and we're trying to help, to support. And I feel like when there's just a lot of noise and from Manahala, the county says, all right, we'll handle it, you know? And I feel like it's a good faith agreement, you know, handle it, take care of the community, you know, accommodate everybody, including the library. It's a one-year agreement. I believe I could support that. And then I'd like to see, you know, a report card on year two, and it'd be up for renewal again, you know? But it's hard. I get why you're here. You guys go down here. I think you guys are, you know, very strong community members. That's where I'm at. I just think the fee schedule, if you could work with that and be friendly, be friendly with the scheduling and the fees and try to accommodate everybody, that's really all we ask.
Yeah, we've got there, I think we've settled everything to cause the disagreements.
There has been several disagreements. We've all been talking about a couple of them, and it's kind of a, you know.
I still don't think we would lease, but if we're going to entertain it, there needs to be some language in there about the fee schedule and the access to the room by county departments, such as the library.
So maybe we could, if we're going to do a year, not do it tonight, just put it on for next, for the August meeting and possibly have it ready for.
Well, I was going to say, we have some folks in the library here. I actually talked to Abby today, and she did tell me that the relationship's been good. They had, after we had some communications the last time, when I met with both y'all, and then y'all actually met together. So I will say that they've been trying, I think, to work together to make sure that room's used effectively. So I guess our direction would be we'll bring back either revise the lease with a fee schedule. We need to make sure that you're okay with that fee structure and how those fees are handled as far as, because typically, if we have a fee structure, they come to us. But Eric and I'll have to figure out how to word that so that those fees can return to the community club, since it is a county building, depending on how the lease is warranted. And/or we'll do some research on the bingo processes to see if there's another way, if it has to be a verbatim lease, if there's an MOU, or there's some other type of agreement. I'm just grasping straws there, Eric, that might meet those statutory requirements. So it's not technically a lease, it's some kind of other agreement. But I think we can, I think we can do that next meeting. Can the library folks say something?
We have folks in the community that will go to the EMS building and use it for their birthday party so they don't have to pay for the community building. And I don't think there should be a lease. I think that the library should have first priority. We fought for a year. They wouldn't even let us in that room. They were going to charge us to use that room for a year, and we didn't use it. And we were having, we have exercise class three times a week. And sometimes, but that, our little library is small, and sometimes we don't have room for everybody. Like, we had 14 the other day, and if they hadn't let us in there, we couldn't have had it because we wouldn't have the space. And we have to call them every time we need to in the room because we don't have a key. And I don't think that's right. I think the library should have first priority.
Those issues are going to happen either way. If the county has the building, or if you guys have the building, you just have to make the phone call, because the door's locked and it couldn't be on reserve. But if there's a schedule for that room, I don't, it doesn't matter if the community club has it or the county has it. I feel like somebody still has to check in unless.
Right.
We've set up a monthly Google calendar. Sharon Crosby, who is the boss over there at the library, has said she's good with it. And I understand Abby said she's good. And so I don't know where this is coming from now. There's no phone call involved. We sit down, we made a schedule for a month.
So how do people get in? If I were to look at the party over there, I would call you. Have to call someone to get in?
We have an agreement. They let us know what time they want to be there, and somebody's there ahead of time to open it for them. Most of the time, you're waiting a little bit, but that's fine. And it just quickly referenced what she said about the EMS. We have EMS people that have rented it for birthday parties, and they are thrilled that it's been very happy to have it. I'm just telling you what we were told.
Some of this history that you're hearing about the library, okay, some of it absolutely did happen. We only had one request ever from the library to lease this space. We responded, it was for the exercise class. We responded, take the rental down to a dollar a person, and they said no. It's a payday. It's the only official request we ever.
No, we had an art class that we wanted to go there too, and y'all said no.
No, nobody.
Well, that was when Randy was calling shots.
Nobody ever officially asked the club for a license.
Well, my take on it is if it is for a community organization or any type of exercise class, anything that the community is using that for should supersede a private entity using that facility. It shouldn't be that, I mean, I look back at your library, your community center at the school, and it was rotted down and everything else. Now you guys have what I call a super-duper upgrade to what you had in hopes that you guys can work this out because the government has a way to mess them up a lot of things when they get involved. It would be better if y'all could figure it out. But going back to your lease in order to play bingo, I understand that. But if we can work out something, a MOU, that you don't have to have a lease, then by all means, you guys should really respect each organization and understand that if they have the community over there wanting to use it for a community event, not somebody that's just wanting to have a birthday party. I don't think that a privatized thing should be over a community group using this facility.
I understand, and I agree with the exception that if somebody has a, say, somebody wants to have a wedding, birthday party, they're going to play that, plan that once at the event. So you're saying somebody comes up at the last minute with a community event?
No. No, that's called planning. That's, I mean, they know, but most of your weddings are going to be Saturday, Sunday. I mean, a lot of them are Saturday, Sunday. So if that's the case, then most of their exercise classes are going to be Monday through Friday.
And we already have them on a schedule.
So I don't see that that's going to impact you having a wedding on the weekend.
I would just say let's investigate the need for a lease in bingo. Right now, it's working.
Because it's your community. I mean, it's our county, but it's, you know, ultimately, you know, y'all spend every day of your life over there, and please work together and get it done.
I think we're there now.
Yeah.
I think it's important too, Peggy, and you can agree with this with me now, and I say now. We have, anything that we try and arrange as far as we have guest speakers come in or anything like that, we know what the library's set schedule is Monday, Wednesday, Friday for their exercise class. And anytime we try or we go to book something, and I've said this over and over and over again in our community meetings, that our goal is not to interfere with Monday, Wednesday, Friday for their exercise class. And it's just a given because we know how important it is to the ladies, and we've been able to climb that mountain and get on the other side of it. And so it's working together, you know? I mean, we have the schedule of who's opening, who's closing, what events are going on, so on and so forth. So I feel very comfortable in what we have come to. Peggy even shared with me, she was good with it. Sharon has shared she was good with it. And I'm happy to hear that Abby is now as well. And everything takes time, and everything is a process, and things evolve as you grow.
What are they going to remember?
We should let our legal counsel and county manager investigate that, the lease option or MOU or whatever it would be for the bingo course for that, revisit it, that's next.
I was going to talk about the fee structure. Let's rack their up and figure out what we need to excel.
And in that lease, I don't think there's any fees, breakdowns, fees. So we don't even know what. So that was kind of what we were talking about, making sure that we have all of the information in the lease. Fee structure.
And if you're comparing to other facilities, like Peggy mentioned, that some people might be doing the EMS well, okay, the county totally maintains that. So your community club half the building, these two ladies here do 95% of the planning and the facilities. If the county doesn't come in here and they're, we even take the garbage out. So, you know, that's, we're buying garbage bags, we're buying paper towels, we buy all those supplies for the facility. That's what we want to do with the bingo fees.
So I just have a quick question, and I don't know how far you've researched it, but I think what I'm hearing the board might be concerned also is if you all have a lease and then there becomes some sort of conflict between yourselves and the library, then all of a sudden, then the lease, you know, trumps because, well, we've got the lease. And I guess my question is, is what I'm wondering is if you've had any discussion with the bingo people at the state? If we leased it, in other words, if you all leased it for the second Tuesday of every month, and you had a lease for one day a month from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock on Tuesday, the second Tuesday in every month, or whatever that is, but you actually have the lease, do you know if that would require, if that would satisfy the state for having the written lease you need to conduct bingo? And then, yeah, you've got a lease for two hours, one time, one day a month. I don't know. I'm just saying, I'm just inquiring if that's something that you have looked at.
I looked at it. I researched the statute and everything, and I don't think that there's any delineations of a lease. They just said a lease.
So you're thinking that might be something we could look into as a possibility?
You're thinking that.
The application says you have to provide the lease with the application. That's pretty much the extent of what it says. Doesn't say MOU, says the lease.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Should we come back next month?
Yes, sir. I'll get with you, I'll get with the library folks. I need to involve Mr. Walder back there with maintenance. We'll try and get a plan together for something, present to board, and then we'll research the legality of it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one out-of-order comment. Actually, I have two, just because the people that are watching on YouTube or online are probably way ahead of me on this AI. And I'm saying off the top of my head, well, they're like Googling it or AIing it. And so while we're in here, just for clarification, it looks like according to Copilot, just for clarification, according to Copilot, the number of counties in the state of North Carolina where commissioners control the health department, according to Copilot, is at least 26 counties. Those include Mecklenburg, Wake, Guilford, Forsyth, Durham, Cumberland, Buncombe, Newhanover and Cabarrus counties. And then on the second issue that I've been asked about, and I, this is me just having a brain spasm, it does appear that we have to have, either have an ABC, county-owned ABC store, or that issue has to be on the ballot at the time we vote for on-premise liquor sales, if we're going to put the liquor sales on the agenda, I mean, on the referendum. So anyway, I'll look it up to be more clear because I can't rely on AI that exclusively, but for clarification on those two issues, that's what Copilot is saying. Thank you.
And our new business D, consideration and approval of Dogwood Health Trust saving lives from substance abuse grant application. Mr. Cave?
Mr. Chairman, we would like to apply for funding from the Dogwood Trust. This is invitation-only funding. It's an amount of $300,000 to help us develop the strategic plan and provide educational and training money to assist us as we go through the process of trying to figure out how to manage opioid funding that we've been receiving. You have to, in order to facilitate the expenditure of those funds, meet the guidelines that are attached to them, you have to have a strategic plan, reporting requirements that you have to build. You have to build your priorities, you have to get public input, you build your priorities, follow your plan, and there's some intensive reporting requirements that you have to submit to in order to spend those funds. Dogwood has made this available to counties in western North Carolina, and we've just never applied for it. There's no match. So we would like consideration to apply for that, for that funding. And then at that time, we'll bring you back to you all. You can be in our contract or a company or an organization to work with, help us develop a plan, and then you can devote your spending priorities on what you, what you want to spend that money on based on public.
Having had the opportunity to sit in with Mr. Cave and a couple of other people, this is a $300,000 grant. In my interpretation, this saves Macon County taxpayers $300,000. And I feel pretty high about us receiving this grant towards the opioid part there.
I also almost thank the Southwest Commission, they helped us apply for the grant, and they based it on the format that they've applied for other counties. It's consistent with other counties.
So if you'd like to have that into motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make the motion that we have the approval for the invitation-only grant funding from the Dogwood Health Trust for funds to hire a consultant to develop a strategic plan and needs assessments and public input and evaluate strategies to utilize opioid fund monies.
Second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion?
Where does that $300,000 come from? I know you say Dogwood Trust, but where does Dogwood Trust come up with $300,000 to get to make the count?
Those were the funds that when HCA bought the mission hospital system, they were required by some statutory limitations to set aside those funds to be based in the western North Carolina region to address healthcare issues. So those are the, I'm assuming they're interest-bearing funds where they invested the money that they acquired, but it, it all stems from the sale of the mission hospital system proper to HCA, which is a for-profit hospital, and it's one of the requirements for them to invest back in, invest back into their community with those funds specifically for healthcare type issues.
And I think to hire a consultant to, to develop a strategic plan and we talk to the people, that's key in order, in getting this grant, is having someone there that, a consultant that's been approved to Dogwood Health. We're not out here on the street doing something by ourselves. This is professional done.
Under motion? In a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye. And you oppose? And then please look record, click five. All right, consent agenda. Commissioner Sherrill, consent agenda, it's your favorite item.
Oh, yeah. Nope.
You good?
I'm good.
Motion, my Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Shields. All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
All right. Appointments, County Franklin Planning Board. I do understand we have ballots. We have two seats and I believe what?
Yeah. We have.
And two of the, if you guys, if you all remember from the June meeting, the slide was taken off of the agenda because we hadn't advertised these vacancies, the town recommended the reappointment of their two members, Janet Green and Debbie Cowan.
And who was the other chairman?
Richard Brady issued our applicant.
Okay, I got you.
And Karen asked them.
Yeah.
And remember, we added that other one on the day there, Janet, Cheryl.
Not for the.
No, that's for our, our court.
Okay.
Okay. So I've got the ballot for County Franklin Planning Board. There are three applicants and we're voting for two.
Pass it down, big sir.
I don't have to look them up.
Okay. So I've got the ballot for County Franklin Planning Board. There are three applicants and we're voting for two.
Pass it down. Pass it on down, big sir.
I don't have to look them up.
Okay. Commissioner Antoine have a vote for Richard Brady and a vote for Debbie Cowan. Commissioner Breeden, we have a vote for Richard Brady and for Debbie Cowan. Commissioner Young, vote for Richard Brady and for Debbie Cowan. Commissioner Shields have a vote for Janet Green and for Debbie Cowan. And Commissioner Sherrill, we have a vote for Richard Brady and a vote for Debbie Cowan. Here's my tally. We have the consent of the board for Richard Brady with four and for Debbie Cowan with five. So I guess we entertain a motion to approve the vote of the board.
Motion, my Commissioner Antoine. Second, my Commissioner Breeden. Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye to the record. And you oppose? All right. Appointments. Item B, community funding pool, seven open seats.
Community funding pool.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we made before this, we have $75,000 in budget for '24, '25 for the community funding pool. It's my understanding there was no money budgeted in the '25, '26 budget year for the community funding pool. So unless this body approves funding out of the fund balance or somewhere else, there's no funding moving forward for this. So my question would be, if that is the case, why would we elect a seven-person board for funds that are not going to carry on? Why would this body not take this $75,000 and take the applications with a few other people and award this money to these nonprofits? That's my question.
The, the '24, the funding piece of $75,000 is in the '24, '25 budget and we, we can change that, put that $75,000 in the '25, '26 budget, when that's kind of a conversation we had.
It was actually part of the consent agenda budget amendment. It's the second amendment from account 113840 to account 1192. So it's, we did that with the consent agenda. You've already appropriated that.
Right. So at this time, I can make a motion on, then we go ahead with the consent agenda of the $75,000. That's going to, was in the '24, '25, but it's going to appropriate, move to the '25.
It is, yes, sir. It's already appropriated, yes.
To the '25, '26.
'26 budget.
Yeah, budget.
So you do have.
I have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Shields. I'm on second to go in the discussion. What do we need, what do we need, what are we voting on right here?
I think, and he's correct in what he was saying, is that we had, for '24, '25, we had $75,000 appropriated, but we chose to do.
You just rolled it over.
Rolled it over for the '25, '26 budget and that's what we're.
That's my recollection. I guess the question is then, John's question directly is, why do we need a board to hand over one year's worth of funds? Is that your question?
That's my question.
So you're saying we just, this body needs to?
We either need to vote to keep funding these NGOs after this $75,000 or, or we continue to fund it and we elect a board. My motion is to stop funding the NGOs after the $75,000 of this, this cycle. So that's, that's my, as I've stated before, it's not the role of the government to tax its citizens to give to nonprofit, or non-government organizations.
But now, we went through this discussion the last time, right? And that's why we moved the money, it's the $75,000, to the '25, '26 budget year. To go through this process here in order to establish a, a group of seven that would take that $75,000 and, and I believe this is annually. I don't, I don't see a continuation each year. I think we have to vote on it as a group here annually, whether to, the nonprofit, the $75,000. And I hear what John's saying, but we may have crossed some of these bridges at the last meeting or the week, the meeting before that, because it went from 13 to seven people. And then that agreement that we would go ahead and use the money appropriated this year or last year in this year's budget really don't, and with the seven people versus the 13 we've had prior.
You choose as which nonprofits make it on this list.
Okay. That's what you're going to do in just a few minutes. Is that?
So traditionally, that has been the community funding pool. The community funding pool has accepted applications and then come back to the board and make their recommendation on to, or to accept the recommendations they gave for funding. I think what John's saying is, don't, don't staff the community funding pool, but the board itself refund the $75,000 since we rolled it over already this year. You would, you would take the applications and make the decision yourself.
The monies are already appropriated for '24, '25. We put it in the '24, '25 budget. It went into effect July 1st, 2024. That money's usually paid out in June of that next year, which would have been '25. We did not have a board to pay out these funds, so then we got into a discussion, well, we don't have enough members to do it, so let's reduce it from 13 to seven. Well, I'm still back at the same question. Why is this body continuing to fund non-government organizations?
I have to agree with you on that, John, and I also have to agree with it. We're going to fund, if we're going to, we've already done it, go through and award these nonprofits that $75,000 that we've rolled over into this budget cycle. I don't know that we need to create a community funding pool committee. I feel like this is where to take that final $75,000 and, you know, award that to those nonprofits and then if we decided at some later date that we were going to continue to fund the community funding pool, at that time we could create a committee, but right now we're only, we're only putting out the $75,000.
And I think my answer was to that. I hear what you're saying, but as an individual, I served on a number of these boards or nonprofits. And that puts me in kind of a bind, which I can work through, of being biased about the boards I serve on, nonprofit boards. And so I just trying to, I'll, I'll be glad to vote, but I'm already biased in who I'm voting for. I guess it's.
I mean, I guess they're, they're asking for a certain amount of money anyway. So it's not like we're just making up the number. So if it's a board that you sit on and they ask for $5,000 and we have $5,000 available, we're all in saying that it's not like we're not making up the number. So I don't know if you're feeling a lot biased on that.
I guess, I guess going back to my question, is it out of order to make that motion or that decision whether or not we're going to continue to fund the nonprofits after this $75,000 cycle? If we're not, there's no need in going through this process. If we are, then the pleasure of the board is we are. So is it out of order for me to make a motion to not continue funding them after?
Well, I feel like, I mean, I don't want, if you're asking me, I feel like it's more of a budget item that we're going to bring up, you know, next budget year. If we make a motion now, is it relevant then, if you make another motion then to pass the budget?
Well, but it's also, he said that that money was somewhat put in contingency if this board decided at the end of next year. Is that what you said?
Are you talking about the current $75,000?
No, the future funding.
The, I think as far as funding, this program going forward, it would be part of those discussions we would have to have mid-year when we talked about the mid-year review. And on the funds that we have available, then you would make that decision. Do you want to put another $75,000 in this year? Do you want to wait for budget time and consider it the budget time? So that, that was the, the discussion that I had was we'd wait for mid-year and have that call, or we could do it at budget time. And then of course, obviously you develop a policy or give me direction that you don't want to include that, and obviously we won't have that discussion.
But as of July 1, there is nothing in that budget for $75,000 for the nonprofits to be paid out in June of 2026. Is that correct?
Kind of. You, you, well, I, and I think this is a lory call because we just switched to year '25, '26. So you just have, you just put $75,000 into year '25, '26, but we didn't spend it in '24, '25, which is why we rolled it over. So I know where you're getting at. To answer your question, no.
Okay.
There is not, there is not an additional $75,000 to do this with in June of next year.
So basically, we have $75,000 right now that was supposed to have been awarded June of '25.
That's correct.
And there is no money sitting there budgeted specifically for the NGO. So there's really no need in going forward with the, the election process of the community funding pool, in my opinion.
I mean, to throw fuel on the fire, I feel like this is $75,000. We just put an additional $50,000 to Hollins Playground that this is supposed to prevent, right? It's supposed to be a community funding pool that says, apply for the funding pool. If we have the money, that's our donation to the community, but yet people come in and we still allocate the funds. I mean, that's, the problem to me is they're still coming, we're still giving them money.
Well, the money they were already promised.
You know what I mean? Maybe Sandy has already promised.
They get that money, but there's nothing for the future.
Right. And then I think it was my understanding that this money was going into the '25, '26 to be used.
So what if we just appointed a couple of members of this board to have a little subcommittee? I bet these two down here to divert, you know, the funds this year.
I just, I think.
And then we would inspect it and make our recommendations.
I would hate to appoint a board and then abolish that board just like that. I think it's.
Are you guys okay with that? These two district cons, contention of approval?
Well, the legality part of it is, would that even be?
If we want a community involvement, this is one way to have community involvement, making decisions, like nonprofits. When you designate somebody here, you, you close that gap, you've got probably, well, you got 70, I believe we had 13 some people that wanted to be a participant in this type of thing. And that keeps people involved in your nonprofits for one thing. And if you move it to us, then we've, we've lost seven people here that can be, that are already important people within this community. And, and I've said this before, is that when you fill out those applications, and I can't remember if I got, if I didn't show you one that was checked off, I can't remember. Where it shows when you fill out that application, hey, your county is part of this.
Oh, yeah.
They make a, we put money, the county puts money into this. That helps the grant situation. And we're lucky on the $300,000. But on the nonprofits, it is a real key to that application process to check that little box and say, the county is making a contribution towards this X, Y, Z, this program. And I don't know, it puts a little feather in your hat when you can do that. But if you're fiddling out a grant or something and you choose not to do that, I may be right or wrong in what I'm saying here. Human nature may come in and I look at that, if I'm looking at the applications, I'd say, well, if the county can't put anything in that, well, I'm going to put you people over here on this side. And, oh, I just see one right here says the county's participating. I'll look at you in a more favorable situation. And I think, just like you've seen here tonight, the involvement of the community in helping us make decisions or being people who will interact with us, give us information. But you've got seven people here.
Well, one thing that I would like to say that, what you were talking about with that check mark, I have never been able to verify that that has any bearing on whatsoever. Even the folks that presented that could not give me that. But, but what I would say, Mr. Shields, is you take all these people right here and let's form a group and let's figure out ways to do fundraisers for these, these people and you'll get a lot more money than $75,000.
And I hear what you're saying and I know, I know where you're coming from and Kelly and some of those people. But the, the information that I've received is the fundraising, immediate fundraising type of activities are not long range. They're, they're short range. Your money comes in, you divide it out, what it may be. But this type of money is, you'll, you'll keep seeking this money. And it will help your programs longer than that money of singers or whatever it may be. The grants will be looked on more favorably than, as a long, long-term money versus your programs and things that you can put together. And not saying that's bad, that's extra good. But if you look on the budget of some of these nonprofits, where that money's going. But to have this little pot of money coming to you is also a, within the nonprofit, it's a pride thing too, that the county is participating in this to the point that they believe in what we're doing. And again, I don't want to refer to, I just know the organizations that some of us have belonged to. And they've, you know, received $10,000 and telling you they're worth more than a half, a quarter of a million dollars to our community if you had to replace them or something happened to them. It's just a thank you of what you're doing here, trying to help people move along, showing your appreciation. And that makes you feel good when you serve on these boards with them or you're serving as a leadership team and things like that. This makes you look different as your governing body and appreciation standpoint.
So we've got a motion and a second on the floor.
But John may have had the motion first.
Wait, no, no.
No.
We've got your, we've got your motion on the floor right now. And it's, quicken if I'm wrong, Tammy. But it's to go ahead and follow through with the seven-member board. Is that what the motion said, your motion?
But I was wanting to make sure that the seven-member board had the 2526 budget of the $75,000.
I did not hear that motion. I have reported John's motion, but I did not hear Mr. Shields' make a motion.
He did.
Mr. Shields made the motion and I seconded for discussion.
Yes. And he was wanting to make sure that the funding, future funding was there.
Tell you what, let's do, let's just have you retract your motion and then you can make a new motion.
Okay. What about?
His motion is accurate.
Okay.
So retract your motion.
I'd like to retract my motion this time and.
Make a new motion.
Make a new one. I like for the community funding pool monies that were allotted for 2425. I think we've already moved that into the 2526 budget of $75,000. Also with that, would like to continue to set up a funding pool group of seven people that we have the names of here tonight and put those people in a responsible situation of divvying the monies out. I just feel funny with me. Okay, I'll take that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shields. I'm going to second your motion. I just feel like, it may not be in vain, maybe they get something out of it, maybe they don't. But they signed up to run the community funding pool. Here it is. And just call a vote if it don't work, then we'll back up and redirect. A motion, I have a second, any further discussion?
So the motion is for the $75,000, which is also.
To go ahead and inform the committee of these people right here, so then the attorney would pass out ballots. If we don't go that route, then we'll redirect. Are they clear? All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye for the record. Aye. All opposed? So motion failed 3-2. What would you gentlemen like to do here?
You can't go in further.
Well, no.
We have $75,000 of funds allocated. Do you want our board to send them out? Do you want to?
I think our board sends it out this year. And I personally, I mean, I sit on the board for a nonprofit and I would not go this route. So I have a hard time supporting that at this point. I understand that it's beneficial to it, but I just, I can't support it.
Legally, do you feel good about that?
About which part?
About two members of our board creating this subcommittee to distribute and allocate funds to the nonprofit.
I would be good with them making the recommendation to this board, which to then.
They would make a recommendation.
To make the recommendation to the board, which I think is what the seven-member community funding pool does, is make the recommendation. This board still has to approve that $75,000, how it's allocated. So they can form, you can form some committee, they make the recommendations to this board and then this board then would vote on.
Would we still do the normal application process? Like the nonprofits would still have to apply and ask for money? And then the two members of the board would just review those applications and then make recommendations to y'all?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
So this time, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we form a subcommittee to take applications for the nonprofits for the award of the $75,000 funding. And we'll report back to this body for approval of the funding.
And subcommittee would be two commissioners.
Can I name the commissioners?
Oh, you.
Go ahead and name them.
Oh, and I would like to name Commissioner Breeden and Commissioner Antoine as the subcommittee for this.
I have a motion by Commissioner Sherrill. Second by Commissioner Breeden. Any further discussion?
Should be Commissioner Sherrill.
All in favor, signify by raising your right arms, stating aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Oppose.
So good. You just wanted to shove it.
Motion passed 3 to 2. Commissioner Antoine, Shields opposed. Next on Airport Authority, two seats.
Two seats. We have three applicants for the Airport Authority. You're voting for two. The three candidates are Natalie Allison, Howard Hafcock, and Janet Shooter.
Yeah, pass them down. Take one down, pass it around.
Take one down, pass it.
Howard Hafcock, otherwise known as Pete Hafcock. First time he signed his name for real. Who's Howard?
How long's our conversation for?
We have Commissioner Young has Pete Hafcock and Janet Shooter. Commissioner Breeden has Pete Hafcock and Janet Shooter. Commissioner Antoine has Pete Hafcock and Janet Shooter. Commissioner Shields has Pete Hafcock and Janet Shooter. And John Sherrill has Pete Hafcock and Janet Shooter. We have consensus on Pete Hafcock and Janet Shooter. Motion due confirmed.
So move.
Your motion by Commissioner Sherrill?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breeden. All in favor, signify by raising your right arm and stating aye. Any opposed? Motion passed, aye. Do we have a need for a closed session?
Very briefly, very briefly. And we also invite Joe Allen to join us.
Do you want to name the general counsel if we need a motion?
143-318.1183 to consult with an attorney pending, or attorney, current litigation.
Motion by Commissioner Breeden?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sherrill. All in favor, raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
A few minutes later.